Go ahead and get started, if we can have a roll call, please.
Tracy McBride.
Here.
Tracy Marcos.
Here.
This is Zilka. Vice President. Vice President Maccabell.
President.
President Lawson.
I'm here. So, thank you. Let's see, I'm trying to get myself cut up. So, we're on item 4.2, Report Out on Closed Session. The Board Met with the Negotiators and moving forward with drafting a lease agreement with Stratford Schools. Welcome, everybody, to this December 9th meeting of the Rhode City School Board. For those of you who are just joining us, we did just have a celebration for Dennis McBride's retirement celebration. So, I'm trying to reorganize myself from hopping in from that meeting. I did post links in the chat for the agenda as well as a link for the comment card, and I will repost those again as more people come in. If you'd like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc and be sure to include your name so we know who to unmute when the time comes. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. If the item is on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is being addressed. So, with that said, we can move on to their changes to the agenda. If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
No move.
Second. Maria first and Cecilia second, I believe. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Trista Marcos.
Aye.
Mr. Marcos.
Aye.
Mr. C D Salka.
Aye.
Vice President Maccabell.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. We do not have any items in our oral communication. We have a couple speaker cards for the reopening and COVID-19 discussion. So, that brings us to 9.1, Recognition of School Board Members. I don't know who's taking that one. Is that Dr. Baker?
So, did Lisa want to, do you want to start?
Sure. Yeah, so, Dr. Baker and I talked about having this on the agenda tonight. So, as a little background, the timing has gotten changed a little bit in terms of our rotation of new board members on, board members off, and rotation of officers. So, some of that is happening on Friday morning, which we Hanukkah before Christmas, during the window that we can legally do it. So, tonight, we wanted just to take a few minutes to say a few words. We just had a wonderful retirement celebration for Dennis, but our board members didn't get to say anything yet. So, we'll want to say just a few words about Dennis. And then, we wanted to say a few words about Janet Lawson, who will be leading tonight's meeting as president. But on Friday, per our board rotation, we'll be moving off as board president, and I will be moving on. And so, I'm just, but on Friday, there won't be as many people there. So, we wanted to say a few words tonight about Janet. And then, also, welcome Mike Wells, who is probably on the call. I know he's been on every call. He'll be coming onto the board officially on Friday and taking his oath and joining us. So, you're certainly welcome to join us on Friday at 8:30 if you like, but I know many of you will be working and have other commitments, so you will not be able to. So, Cecilia, Maria, do you want to start and say a few words about Dennis?
I can certainly do that. Well, gosh, I've known Dennis for, gosh, how long were our kids in Roosevelt? It's been a long time. We both had our children at Roosevelt. The McBrides were just wonderful at Roosevelt. Lori was always on site. She was a room parent. She was just wonderful, and I think that they really made a huge contribution to that site. Dennis and I also were on the Shared Decision Making Council at Woodside High School. So, there's a few things that we have in common. But I really appreciate Dennis for many things. One being that he's always been inclusive. If I didn't get an email, if I didn't know something, he was just more than willing to share. He always copied us on things he thought we should know. As you heard tonight, he's a very caring individual. He speaks from the heart, and it was tough making some of those decisions, but he did it, always thinking of the children. As you heard Warren say tonight, he visited every classroom, and that was just really amazing to me because I know other trustees who don't even visit the school. And he visited every classroom, and I knew when he was out there because the children would come and tell me my friend was on the school. And he's right, those little toddlers and preschoolers loved him. They just loved Dennis. They just gave him a hug and run over. So, that was really cool to see. You work really hard on the parcel tax and all the bond issues, and that is something that I really appreciate about you. You were tirelessly there. You know, there were many meetings where you miss family activities, birthdays, and other things like that. I remember celebrating your birthday and you saying, "Oh, my God, I'm going to be late for the dinner. I'm not going to get dessert," or "I'm only going to get dessert." So, I really want to thank Lori and Casey for, you know, selfishly giving up their time with you so that we can do what we needed to do. You are extremely knowledgeable in finance. So, I was telling Justin, my son, that I'm going to have to I was, you know, pretty confident that I didn't really that, you know, he was like, "Oh, well, you know." Now, I'm like, "Uh-oh." So, that, that I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss you for that. And I really want to thank you because when you came on the board, I was struggling finding every penny and accounting for every line, and you really helped me with that. You were the auditor, unofficial auditor. You really could figure it out. And, you know, for people that don't know, the finances of school districts are totally different than other finances. So, I think that you can teach the Master in Governance class, not only in finance, but on how to be a school board member. You have mentored many others. You were always prepared. I could kind of feel where I didn't really have to pay as close attention because you had already done it. You would always read it, and we have the questions ready. So, I thought, "Oh, Dennis cut that." So, I didn't have to work as hard. Now, I'm going to have to start reading all those packets from top to bottom again. So, I do appreciate that. And again, some, you know, some board members aren't prepared. They would come to board meetings and be opening the packet right there. So, that really spoke volumes to me. You also really did a great job in connecting to the Spanish-speaking families and on the Bayside, and I really appreciated that. I really admire you for learning Spanish and delivering your message in Spanish to the families. And, you know, some people may say, "Oh, well, anybody could do that. You could read that," but it really meant a lot to them, and I know because they told me so. So, I really appreciate that. You've always been a champion for our students, advocating, as we heard tonight, with the legislators, the city council, whoever needed it. You were there. Didn't have a voice, and that is what being a trustee is all about. You were there for them. You make sure that they got what they deserve and what they needed. And, you know, you worked tirelessly, hours and hours, and I know some people think you get paid a lot, but unfortunately, that is not the case. And I know that you donated it all back. You gave all those books. The other thing you gave was all the supplies. I remember you delivering supplies to the classrooms. So, there's a lot of things that people don't know because you are that quiet, humble being that doesn't like to be put on the spot, as someone said tonight. And you are really since we're talking about the four pillars nowadays with COVID, I think that you are one of those, and this year has been really unprecedented. And, you know, when things got tough, you hung in there, and it's not easy during those very heated meetings that we had with parents, very emotional. And I appreciated that you were always there, and I can always call and talk to you about an issue, and you would always set me straight. So, I really appreciate that, that you helped me with that. And I know tell you a lot more things, but I really appreciated that you were always centered, and you did the right thing. You didn't take the easy way out. You always talked about the whole district, not only the professional staff. And you are, you remember their birthdays, everyone's birthday. You remember notes, and that takes a lot, you know, a lot of work. So, Dennis, thank you for your leadership, for being my friend, for all the help you've given me, and more importantly, for helping the children of the school district in Redwood City. So, my friend, a big hug.
Now, Madam President, how does this work? Do I just sit here mute till the end, and then I get to speak, or?
I'm not in charge of this item, so.
Okay, Cecilia, your turn.
Okay, I guess that's how it is.
So. Dennis, you have to take it all in.
Um, I don't know where to start other than to say, I was very emotional from the beginning. Pardon me. Um, when I joined the Redwood City School Board, or thought about joining the Redwood City School Board, was because I had the opportunity to be a parent and in the past present for the DLEC. And so, I knew very well or, and although Maria was in it too, I never got to be in any committees with Maria. And so, what I liked about Redwood City Board was that I do feel that we are a community, and we are a group of, you know, good people that want to do good for the Redwood City School community. And what I admire about Dennis is his genuine personality. He really is an awesome trustee, and one, one of the moments that I will never forget, and here I'm getting emotional, is when the Redwood City School District had to make the decision to close schools. I was still campaigning. I was not on the board yet, and I remember being at the Fox Auditorium, and Dennis couldn't help it and started crying. And I was like, "Wow, he is the only gentleman on the board, and he has a great heart." He was doing this, although it was not something the community and some of the parents wanted, but it was the best in the long run. Um, this last two years, he's given me a lot of support. From the beginning, he reached out to me. I would get texts from him, just checking up on me, how I was doing. I also got birthday cards in the mail. I did get about a page and a half of a personal letter that just came, and that, that just says a lot about Dennis. And I would tell you, I would dearly miss him. Obviously, I care for all of you other board members, but I did tell him one time, he is extremely exceptional. Everything, especially being that the district runs based on the budget. And again, we all know this, right? He is our magnifying lens guy. And so, I told him, when I found out he wasn't running again, I was like, "Dennis, you're leaving? Our magnifying lens is gone? I don't know. I have two more years." So, anyway, I don't want to overspeak. There's honor and just privilege to have worked with you because you are just an amazing individual. So, from the bottom of my heart, you would really, truly dearly be missed. So, thank you for everything you do for the Redwood City Kids and the staff.
All right, we'll go in order. So, I'll go next, and then Janet, as president, can go. So, let me start with a quote by Maya Angelou. "I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget the way you made them feel." And I think we've heard this all night. You know, you've made me and that just goes a long way in this world. And boy, we've heard that the last couple of hours. So, thank you, Dennis, for really making us all feel like people who mean something and can make a difference in this world. And I think together we have. I think Maria, you know, spoke so well of, and Cecilia spoke so well of so many hard decisions we've had to make together. But I always knew that we would go in there, we would listen to everybody, we would look at the data, and we would just do the best that we could. And, you know, sometimes we had the pleasure of being able to add programs when money came in, but we've had a rough many years where, you know, California has just not funded public education. Dennis, you've always been very good at keeping the focus on students, but also being mindful of needing to manage our budget so we could be here for another day for the kids. And so, really, as Maria said, we're going to miss your eagle eye. We're all going to have to step it up a little bit more because we always knew you had our backs. And so, you know, we'll do that in your honor, for sure. Personal note, I wanted to say that, you know, Dennis is one of the folks who encouraged me to think about running for school board many years ago. And Dennis, because of you, I'm on the board, and I think we've been a great team, all of us that have worked together over the years, and, you know, we've made a difference for the kids, which really makes a difference for the community. So, thank you, Dennis, from the bottom of my heart. Really appreciate all that you've done.
Okay, I'm not going to get through this without tearing up. I'm just telling you ahead of time. Dennis, is Lori still with you?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, one thing I've always loved being on the board with Dennis is how a quick phone call, or in the pre-COVID days, a real in-person chat as we're leaving a meeting or an event, could turn into a conversation that lasted even an hour or two. It would always start with some topic related to the district, but then it would flow into politics, and then to family, my kids, your kids. Maybe we'd talk about genealogy, back to politics, maybe onto some bond construction chat, and back to family until one of us had to get to our next meeting. I, I just really have always appreciated and enjoyed those conversations. So, when I first ran for board in 2015, and this is a running theme here with all the board members who spoke here and at the previous meeting, Dennis was the one who encouraged me to run. This was always there for every question that I didn't know that I had. He would call or email or show up at my door with information, general support, sometimes even being, while he was being tied to a tree by my three-year-old, who is acting as Batman. As a new board member, I was seated in the fifth seat at the dais, and Dennis, having just completed a year as board president, was seated one seat ahead of me. So, I appreciated having Dennis right next to me as he would make sure to give me background information on items that I might not have had known about already, or I could quietly ask him what some acronym meant that I had just heard without feeling dumb for not knowing what it meant. And he also made sure that I knew that sitting in that fifth seat meant that I was responsible for turning on and off the lights during presentations. And he never let me miss my cue to get up and flip that light switch, and it kind of became a bit of a quiet competition for me. Could I get up and get to the switch before Dennis would remind me? So, Dennis has a way of making everyone in the room feel like they are the smartest person in the room, the funniest person in the room, the kindest person in the room, and the most awesome person in the room. And I don't really know how he does it, but I think it's some combination of finding a genuine interest in everyone he meets, as well as his natural ability to celebrate the successes of other people. It's a true gift, and I think that is why we had so many people, I think almost 160, in the meeting to celebrate you earlier tonight, Dennis. And while I'm going to miss your wealth of knowledge, your experience, and yes, I even wrote your eagle eye on the financials. That's a running theme, too. I know you aren't really going anywhere, and I have no doubt that you'll be hearing from many of us, whether board members or staff, just to bounce ideas off of you or get your input on things. And I do look forward to continuing to hear from you by call or text, seeing pictures of Ella and the Grandpups. So, to Lori and Cory and Casey, I do want to thank you for being such a strong support unit for Dennis. I know that you've sacrificed a lot for Dennis to serve on the board. He's had many, many late-night meetings, hours and hours reading board packets, emotionally drained when there were particularly hard decisions for the board to make. And unwavering support from you and the family. And I do know that he's thrilled to have more time now to spend with you and especially with Ella. So, Dennis, thank you, thank you for building me up when I was a new board member, for believing in my ability to do this job, which in turn helped instill in me the confidence I needed to lead. I'm a better board member because of you, and for that, I'm grateful. I didn't tear up, sort of. Um, Dr. Baker?
Yeah.
Wait, hold on, before you go, I forgot to mention that as a gift to you, Dennis, the, the board members and I have made a donation in your honor to the Boys and Girls Club of the Pennsylupps.
Oh, thank you so much.
I think you'll be getting something in the mail from them.
Thank you. That's awesome.
So, Lori created, so please read that piece. But one piece I want to take away at this point in time. I get the pleasure all the time to tell my colleagues that, you know, Redwood City has the best board, and it really does. And to all of you, that's, that's a great thank you. But to Dennis, I'm going to miss the, there's times, Dennis gets up really early in the morning, and so do I. And of course, when living in San Francisco, you want to get up early and commute. Well, even though we're not commuting now, it's, I am commuting days to work. But it's a great time to, if I've missed something or he's sent an email, I just picked up, I don't pick up the phone. I'm in the car, and the car has all the, you know, the gadgets that one needs to talk without having your hands involved. So, we get into these conversations either early in the morning or late going home at night, or sometime at night. I'm going to miss those. It's been some difficult years that we've had the past few years, and many times, Dennis has kind of walked me off the cliff. And I also want to really thank you during the two years that were really difficult, when my mom got really ill. And you were always there for that, before she passed, to make sure that I was okay, that she was okay, the rest of the family tear me up even when I felt really down in the dumps. So, that I will miss. Everyone has already said the wonderful things about you and your evil, that eye that you have when it comes to the finance, how caring you are, and how upfront you are about yourself and your feelings and what you're thinking. And one thing that I will admire about you as a board member is you always told me, "Don't be afraid to push back on me. Don't be afraid." And I know as superintendents, many times, superintendents are not encouraged to do so because they're in, they don't want to make waves or worry about not having a job. But you have been always upfront about that, you know, push back, push back, and let me know exactly what you think. And we've had some really good conversations when they've been really hard conversations to have. And so, I want to wish you the very best in your years to come without being on the board. But as you look at my video, you will see that I always say, "Come," you know, I was like, tell everybody that leaves the district, "Don't forget to come back." You can be, if they're teachers, you can come back and be a substitute. If you're classified, you can come back and help us out in some subposition. I kind of say the same thing to you, so, so watch it. And Kathy James did a wonderful job, along with Kyle tonight, and Kathy gave us 30 seconds. 30 seconds goes like this. So, hopefully, I didn't ramble too much for you. So, thanks so much, Dennis, for everything you've done. I really, really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Really do.
Thank you, John. So, now is it my turn?
Gift from the staff, yeah, from the district.
We do have a gift for you, and I think it was the one that was wrapped, if I'm not mistaken. That was the one, right, Ellie? I think so. I think.
In a green polka dot box?
I think that's.
No, in a silver bag.
Oh, it's in a silver bag.
Oh, yeah, silver bag.
Okay.
Here, here's Vanna. Actually, she's cuter than Vanna. Hold on, I gotta change the sound. Or we can't decide what room she's going to be in. Okay, now you can hear. Oh, cool. It's a picture of John.
I don't think so.
There it is.
There is. It's a gavel.
That's very cool. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dennis, can you hold? Hard to see it. Oh, we see Ella. Okay, now you have to talk so you show up.
Okay, thank you so much. This is very cool. You know, the irony in this is I think we only banged the gavel once in 17 years.
Few words.
Thank you. Nice. So, now is it my turn?
Sure.
What? Vanna's whispering in my ears.
Does she want to have a turn? I think she should have a turn, too.
Just listening to John, and I know Dennis and I say, "Dennis, what's going on? Are you doing a good job?" "Well, John, you don't want to talk to me anymore." I said, "Well, maybe he will."
No, I looked, I looked forward to those calls as well, John. So, I'm going to start with Janet, as board president. And I'm really glad that you guys did this today, so there can be a lot of people on to recognize Janet. As you know, I've been board president four, four times, and I, and I would tell you when, my first time, you know, I would watch, and I would study it, and, you know, I think it was in year three when I became board president. And it's a whole different world. I mean, you're, you're having to keep track of everything. You can't have a mental break at all because somebody will say something, you need to react to it. And this year, I don't, I can't think of a school board president that could have done a better job. You know, after four years of experience, I do not think I could have done a better job. And I just thought you were all so calm, and you were so collected, and you were respectful of people, even when they would say things that were kind of dissing your homeschool. And you just carried yourself with such professionalism, and I just was in awe the whole time. And so, thank you for being our president in what has to be one of the toughest years. And then, I just loved your boys, even little Batman who tied me up. I, we, sometimes we'd talk in front of your house, and your kids are all just amazing. I, we sometimes we talk in front of your house, and your kids are all just amazing, so enjoyed them, and so enjoy you and Tim. And Tim should be thanked for all the work you're doing, so you're not home. And then I'm gonna go in order of kind of president, vice president, if you wonder my pattern. And Elisa, you're like the little Energizer Bunny, and you know, you're the vice president of the state CSBA. You're on the San Mateo CSBA. I think you drive to Sacramento three times a month, or at least you did before COVID. And, and then if I talk about parcel taxes, our last parcel tax, you worked, I think, about 70 hours a week. I, I was doing things and I was like, I rounded a zero compared to you. And the best part about you is you always have that chipper happy, we can do this thing. And so you just picked up everybody's spirit. And, and you did that on all the bonds, all the parcel taxes, and you're just one of those people that, if it's about kids, you just, you just take it and you run with it and you just crush it. So I have so much respect for you. Maria, we've been together a lot of years, the longest, I guess John was sitting up in front during that time too. You've been, it's funny, you say I taught you, you've actually taught me, there's many times I call you, and I'm just like bouncing off the ceiling on something, and you'll use that calm voice, now Dennis, it's gonna be okay. We'll make it work. And, but I also just really appreciate how how wired you in you are to the bake side community, and how you provide so much guidance and intelligence for us that none of us have the ability to get. One of my things that only John and you and I would remember is, do you remember I'd been on the board about a year and a half when I got up out of my seat and I gave a two hour presentation on why we shouldn't be cutting $3 million? And this was a situation where the superintendent, we had just failed on a parcel tax, and the superintendent wanted to cut $3, $3 million so that he could quote, live up to the issue, like he said, if we don't pass this, I'm gonna have to cut $3 million. And I spent probably 200 hours analyzing it and studying it, and I just couldn't get where we needed to make the $3 million cut. And so there was two lessons there for me. The first lesson was, when we went and put that parcel tax on, I, I trusted other people and what they said, and I didn't go through with my normal due diligence. And so I gave a two hour presentation explaining the budget the whole time two people were shaking their head no. And then the board voted five oaths to not make the cuts. And then I, I had a year to almost get an ulcer, because if I was wrong, that $3 million would be $6 million. And it turned out I was off by half a million, we are actually half a million dollars better than I thought. But again, it's a valuable lesson for Mike as a new board member and any board member, that just make sure you always understand everything that crosses you, because, because it has an impact. But Maria, you, you are one of my heroes too, and I just loved working with you. I never liked when you became president, and I, we got distant, you know, because you were all like right next to each other. Let's see, so next would be Cecilia. So Cecilia, I was talking to Dr. Baker last week, as I told you on the phone, and I feel so bad for you because the first two years as a school board member is really, really hard. You're, you're trying to, if you think of it as an airplane and you're the pilot, you, you feel like you can turn the stick left or right, and you have no idea if it's gonna go left or right. And to add to that, you, you've had distance learning, and you've had boundary changes, and what else am I leaving out? I'm going into, I'm going into retirement mode. There's been like four just huge things that usually come like once in a board's lifetime that you've had to deal with, and, and you, you've dealt with it, and you're just gonna be a great board member, as I've said to you privately. You, you know way more than you think, and you, you really will be much more valuable if you get in the mix and, and tell us what you think. Because when you do, you, you actually have thoughts that are things that we haven't thought of. And so, so I just really have enjoyed working. And, and you're one of the people that sends me just the absolute loveliest texts and the loveliest emails that I put in my, if you're having a crappy day, pull that email or text that. So thank you so much for all your kindness. And Dr. Baker, you are amazing. I have such respect and regard and admiration for you. You have a job that's pretty much no win. Half the world's gonna like it, half the world's gonna hate it. You care so deeply for everybody. My fondest memory is when we were looking for a new superintendent, and we felt like we had to go out and do a national search so that we could, we knew we wanted you, but we felt like to validate it. We need to do this search. We started getting emails from everybody in the staff, teachers, classifieds, saying, you're idiots, why, why don't you just make John, he would be perfect, blah, blah. So we finally said, okay, we know it, they know it, let's do it. And I'll never forget the back to school event in the theater when it was announced, and the whole room just jumped up like it had been scripted. They're all clapping, they're all cheering, half of them are reaching for Kleenex so they can wipe their nose and eyes. And that told us as a board that we had made the right decision. And there is absolutely no doubt in my mind, you care deeply for every kid and decisions. I worked, I'll give you an example, I worked in high tech, and we, we went from 40 million to 4 billion in 12 years. And there was times where we'd go backwards, and we'd have to lay people off, and people would wait, and they wouldn't make the decision, and so the problem would be worse, and we'd have to lay people off. And what I've always respected about you is, as painful it is, you make the decisions, because these, most of these people were laying off, you had a hand in hiring, you know. You've done a marvelous job in retirement celebrations, when we do the retirements of the teachers and the classified, you get up there and you so personalize it, you, you would think you're their brother, that you know so much about them, and you just see the people leave feeling so good. So you're just an amazing human being. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you.
And I am available for phone consultation. Or just to walk you off the ledge.
Can I just say one more thing? I'm really gonna miss the fact that Dennis was the intelligence person on the board. He knew about everybody, and I really appreciated your connection to Dr. Baker, because we went through some really hard times, and I was worried about John, but you were always there checking in and letting us know what was happening, you know, so I appreciated that, and I think the whole district is better for it. And Dennis, you forgot, when you first started looking with that lens of that money, we were there till almost one o'clock in the morning, and we missed the, the We've come a long way, Dennis. I am gonna miss you. The other thing I'm gonna really miss is you whispering all those little things like Janet said about this and about that, and lightening the mood when things got really tough. So I'm gonna miss you, my friend, but stay in touch. And again, thank you to your family, because they really were behind you.
Absolutely.
I really appreciated them sharing you with us, and I love the pictures of Ella.
That was Ella watching the event tonight.
And so for the audience, if you missed the retirement celebration that we just had for Dennis, and his wife Lori and Elisa put together a kudo board that I'm gonna share a link to in the chat. So if you have anything you'd like to share, you can go ahead and add to that. And then Kathy James also put together a wonderful slideshow and video that I will also post a link to in case anybody would like to see that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so just a few more minutes on some thank yous. I do think we want to take a few minutes to thank Janet Lawson, our wonderful president this year.
Yes.
Dennis, you basically said exactly what I was gonna say, is I often feel like, you know, we for the right time, and Janet, I cannot think of a better person to have carried us through this year. You're definitely the most text savvy. I know in talking to you about taking over, starting next week, you said, well, I've got four different devices I'm working on, I got the speaker cards, I've I know that you'll support me my first few meetings, and I hope the audience will forgive me, I will not be as good as Janet, that's for sure. Maybe the whole year, but I'm sure the first few meetings at least. So Janet, thank you so much, you just have done such a wonderful job, really appreciate all of that. And I did want to let you know that we talked to Tim, your husband, about ideas, because we wanted to do something that you could share with the family. And so the board members, we have gotten you. Now, of course, we jump back into Purple Tears, so the movie theater is now closed, but as you know, the downtown movie theater offers, and I'm sure they'll be offering it again once we get it back into the red zone or the orange, orange zone. You can rent out a movie theater for you and your family to have a private showing of a new movie or a classic movie. And so your colleagues here on the board will be sponsoring your family at the movie theaters. So we'll coordinate that.
Thank you, guys. Oh, that's awesome. The kids will love that. That's so special, a movie theater for us. Very cool. Thank you.
Well, I, I think you deserve it, Janet. I mean, as Elisa just said, you're not doing just the president's job. You, during the clerks, you've got to, you know, get the technology here and there, and during this unprecedented year, I mean, it's been a tough year to be president, and you have done it with grace and knowledge and what that nice, easygoing style, and I know it can be nerve wracking when you got kicked out of Zoom a few times, and you know, trying to find that someone raised their hand, and you know, all those other tough choices, and you did it quite well. So thank you very much for doing that. And Elisa, thank you to you for stepping in and saving the day, and as Dennis said, you do have that energy, always going and going, and that smile and positive attitude. So I do appreciate that about you as well. Thank you both.
Maria. So you guys couldn't have said it any better than what all of you guys have said about Janet. I do admire the fact that you did take this board precedent position, and again, due to COVID, you have handled our board meetings so well, so calmly, and everything has gone smoothly. So I do appreciate everything, everything that you have done for the board. So thank you very much, and look forward to continue to work with you guys.
Thanks, Cecilia.
So Janet, I'm gonna go next. Thanks so much for everything you've done this, this time of being the president of the board. And also thank you for, many times was I was unable to go to a committee meeting, and we were on the same committee, and you were there representing us, especially the chamber one, because it was during that time, and that chamber, for those of you board members who have not been to a chamber meeting, the super there's our Redwood City, Sequoia, and Belmont, Redwood Shores, and then the county soup, and then I think we have the Cuyahoga president, if I'm not mistaken, that's there.
Cuyahoga, and then added San Carlos too.
Oh, that's right, they, they've now added San Carlos. And so they put the superintendents on the agenda, and you're supposed to give an update. And so I would either text Janet or I'd text Dennis, because Dennis was on it too. I'm not, I'm running late, I'm not gonna make it, because they put you normally alphabetically, and so they would step in. And Janet, thanks so much for stepping in for me, and I say, because we'd always have the meeting, like, our meetings would be the Tuesday before, chamber meeting especially. So we went over things, so she could just tell them what we were doing, because they always asked for these updates. So I really appreciate that. And just all your timeliness of getting back to me on texts, on email, whenever I needed something, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. And also, those good conversations about the boys, I always had good conversations about the boys, so. I will, you're still on the board, and that's fantastic. And then you can help us all out with the technology business with the Zoom and as long as we have problems. Thank you. I really appreciate it. There is a gift from Cabinet for you, and I don't know, was she able to get it, Ellie, or not? Cool. Oh, next?
Next something?
Sorry, next week.
Okay, next week. Okay, perfect.
I'll slowly deliver it to you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's been a year. And never in my wildest dreams did I think that this is what being board president was gonna look like. And thank you to all of the board and the superintendent and Cabinet and the audience, just for your patience as we figured out how to move to virtual meetings. I do want to recognize Eliana and Kyle for all the work they do behind the scenes on these board meetings. They, they make my job easy because of all the work that's going on behind the scenes, and I appreciate everything the two of you have done. I hope that I haven't overwhelmed you with my text messages during meetings and asks and requests, and as I just sent a message, I don't even know if you've seen it, I accidentally deleted something from the speakers cards tonight, so, oops. And yes, Elisa, you're gonna, you're gonna do great. It, you know, you'll get the hang of it. I sent you all the links and everything that I use, and it'll be good. But I do, I want to acknowledge that I had a model of really strong board presidents during my first four years on the board. Models helped me move smoothly into this role. So thanks, everyone, and I look forward to handing off the baton on Friday. Okay, are we at the end of that item? I'm gonna move this along. Okay, let's see, we are on 10.1 Measure U Oversight Committee. Who do we have here for that?
So, so I'm not sure if Don Gibson, the chair of the parcel tax oversight committee is here, but
I don't.
I don't see him.
I don't see him. Priscilla, I don't see him here.
Okay, so do you want me to just summarize what was done on the report? So the oversight committee, we have, I just wanted to acknowledge the members, they did a lot of work on reviewing the your plans for the parcel tax measures. We have Don Gibson as the chair, and then Janet Burgess, Marjorie Carrington, Hannah Steiner, Gloria Torres, Philip Burley, and Rea Yalch, not sure if I'm pronouncing the last name correctly. But they did two meetings this year, and on the last meeting, which was on November 17, they did a final review of the expenditures, the usage of the parcel tax for the fiscal year 2019-20, which is the year three of the So in their review, they have all approved the parcel tax expenditures and found that the, the revenues were expended in a manner that is consistent with the ballot language. So the report shows three years, so the top is the information about the 1920 fiscal year, but the, all the data for year one and year two of the parcel tax is also included in the report. Are there any questions?
Like none. So thank you for that, Priscilla. Okay.
So I'm, I'm the board representative to that, and I would say that they did a great job, but they're, they took their charge. We, we talked when they first started about, you need to do a really good job, because if we want to do another parcel tax, people are gonna look to this, and if, if we haven't done it correctly, we won't get a second one. And so they really took that to heart, and they really sifted through the information and questions and challenged it almost, almost too much to be honest, but they, they took
with how the teachers have stepped up to the plate and really, really provided programs that benefit all of our youth on all levels. And it's, it's just been an honor to be on this committee, and I want to take this moment to thank Dennis for all of his hard work, not only on your board, but on this committee of representing the board. It has, it's, it's really great to have someone there that really does understand all any of us have to take a deeper look, and Dennis can take one quick look and, and see whatever needs to be seen, and it's just great to have his leadership on board. So thank you, Dennis, and thank you, board members, for allowing us to present this today.
Thank you. And Janet, I want to just publicly thank you for all our audience members for your five years of city council service, the last five years. Thank you very much for all the work that you've done for the community in Redwood City, and of course, before that, the Planning Commission and all the other commissions that you've been on in our city. And of course, before that, the Planning Commission and all the other commissions that you've been on in our city. And I know our paths will continue to cross. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Can I say, I also really want to thank you for always being supportive of our students. You were always out there volunteering at TAF. I think I put up a picture of you during one of the MLK Celebration Days of TAF. So thank you for all you have done and continue to do. All those baskets you fill with supplies for our teachers. You are, you've done a lot. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Maria. We are a team. We are a team indeed.
So Janet, we should also thank Priscilla and her team. They, they worked so hard on putting all the financials together.
Absolutely. Thank you Dennis. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for being here Janet. Really appreciate your, your work and everybody on the committee also for
You're welcome.
what you do for us here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments on board? No? Okay, moving along to, let's see, we are on bond program consent items. For a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Dennis and Maria. Can we roll call vote please?
Aye.
Tracy Martinez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Silicon?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Okay, awesome. Thank you. I'm trying to see if we have anybody from the bond here. I don't see anybody. So that moves us along. We don't have any bond action items. So on to 13.1 Discussion on COVID-19.
Okay, perfect. I believe Wendy, you have the ability, right? To put up the presentation for this evening. So good evening, board members. What we're going to do this evening is as soon as the slide presentation is up, we'll give an update on where we are as far as our reopening in January.
My screen is blank.
Yeah, it is so far.
Not able to see this?
No.
Let me try one more time. Thank you for your patience. Hold on.
I'm having difficulty. Give me one moment, please.
When you did this last time too, it's on a whiteboard screen or something. So you have to click on something different because it's showing a whiteboard.
Does it have anything to do with Janet Borgens is in the middle of the screen still?
Yeah, that could be complicating. How about if I X?
No, so Wendy, Liz's advice was correct. There should be, when you try to share, there should be an option for you to select one of the tabs and not the whiteboard.
Okay, can we see it now?
Now it's black. It's awful. There we go. There we go. Perfect. We just got the first slide. So this evening, the topics to review are the January reopenings, the planning for school sites, an update on pilot and hub classrooms. And then we also want to do an update on testing, tracking and tracing. And we did the update and the testing, the tracking, the tracing with the Superintendent's Advisory Council on, on Monday, on Monday evening. So we also wanted to share this with the board and the state community. So it'll be, I believe, Liz Wolf and Wendy and possibly Linda, I think Dr. Montes. Also when it comes to the hub classrooms as she is overseeing them.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what's the next step in our reopening plans. And as you remember, a month ago, we submitted a reopening plan to the county in order to be able to open up our pilots and our hubs and that was approved. We took the components that were required by the county and we are asking each of our school sites to develop their site plan for reopening in January around those components. And these are the components that are in each school's plan. These plans are due to us by December 14th and we have half of them already because the schools have had their meetings with their site councils or they have finalized these plans. And as you can see, there are components on cleaning and disinfecting, on the different trainings that are taking place. A lot about the entrance and egress and movement within the school in order to keep the health and safety in, in the forefront and follow the four pillars that have been mentioned already this evening. And then we've also talked quite a bit in these plans about the health screening and the hygiene practices. So each of the schools is supplying this information. The plan that we submitted a month ago, but then they're being customized for for the recess where the kids are being dropped off, what classrooms are being used, what bathrooms are being assigned to, where the temperature is being taken, all sorts of information. And each school, I have to say, is doing an outstanding job of paying very careful attention. Martin is going to each site and walking through the sites with the principals and the vice principals and really making sure that the best decisions are made for, again, for the health and safety of the students and the faculty that will be onsite. So this is the kind of information, in addition to the information each of the school sites is also giving information about the schedule of the classrooms for the classroom. Happens to be from Roosevelt. And so they have a number, quite a number of classrooms that will be in person starting in January. And so they've given the information about the drop off in the morning, when the recess will be picked up. These are cohorts, hybrid cohorts. And so students are coming in the morning and then they're coming in in the afternoon in some cases. And you can see it's all being laid out, school by school, classroom by classroom. Next slide. They're also giving information about the hubs that they will have on the school site. These are the, as you know, there's two different names for classrooms that have students in them that are not for in-person instruction. One being a hub, which Linda Montes will be talking about in a couple of minutes, which are being provided by our partners that have we're hiring people or they are hiring people that are, are coming in and watching students do their distance learning throughout the day. But they still need to follow the same health and safety procedures. And so those are being recorded as well as the pods are being recorded where the teachers are going to be also monitoring students within their classrooms as they provide distance learning. And so that is also being recorded in these reopening plans because with any student and any teacher on campus, we need to be careful about how much space is being taken in terms of the classroom assignments, the ingress and egress, the bathrooms, recess, all of that. Next slide. And then this, each school is also thinking about the staggered return. This was something that was very important to the county and I think we mentioned this about a month ago, that if there are school sites that have quite a number of students who are returning, then they really don't want everyone returning at the same time on the same day. So again, as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, Roosevelt is having quite a few classrooms open up in January. And so they are determining which are coming on January 19th. And then they are taking some of the students and having them return on January 25th. Now, of course, the students will all be, prior to these dates, will be involved in distance learning. So it sounds like school starts for them on these days. Is there in-person instruction that starts on these days? Where the distance learning will pick up again on January 5th. Next slide. And then this is Linda to talk a little bit about the hubs.
Sure. So it's been a month since we had our first hubs going. I checked in with some of the hub teachers yesterday. Actually, we had another training. So things are going well. The goal of having students attending classes, completing their work has, has definitely improved in terms of the students completing work, definitely attending their classes. We have a group of hubs that are starting this week and next week, we have one last group starting. The idea is now the principals that asked our last principals meeting if they had the funding, if they could add their additional hubs. Because Dr. Baker has used that funding that he had for his initial hubs. So I'm working with principals now. And of course, Liz is also meeting with principals to determine whether they can add additional hubs. So I've been in contact with those. And so you'll see that in the right, very right column in that highlighted blue section of, for example, Alvin and the Selby will start another hub in January for grade one. Henry Ford will start another hub. Also, and then North Star is, will start their first hub on January 19. So although students will not physically be on campus January 5th through the, until the 19th, we, our hub teachers will still be working with the students, just virtually. I met with them yesterday to create a schedule to work with students in small groups, make contact information so that they'll be able to receive ongoing support, even in the two weeks in January where we return, where we're not yet on campus. And then the hubs will start on January 19th or that Tuesday when we return. So I'll continue to work with the principals to determine whether they're going to add hubs. Some of the sites have wonderful partnerships like the Boys and Girls Club. So example, Hoover will open up sixth through eighth grade, three additional hubs he's hoping to open up for just sixth, seventh and eighth grade as that's an area of need. So we'll just keep you posted in terms of the numbers and when the start dates.
So all of this information is being collected by, as I said, by December 14th. And we will then write a district plan, a district reopening plan that will be submitted to San Mateo County and to the county health because once again, that plan needs to be approved as well as we need to apply for a waiver from the state because of the conditions that we find ourselves in now with the purple designation. So we will be turning in two different formats and our plan is to turn them in by the time we go off for break so that both the county and the CDE will have time to read our, our reopening plan as well as our waiver plan and to return our approval prior to the actual return of students on January 19th. And so then this is some more information about getting ready for the reopening in January, finalizing the classroom setups the week of January 4th, the week of January 11th, making sure that the testing is taking place and everything is in order. And again, because the plans are being written so carefully with so much detail, this will happen. And then the week of January 18th, we begin with a few students coming the following week, if there are a large number of students who are going to be on campus so that it's a staggered reopening.
Thank you, Liz. So this evening, as John mentioned, I will be discussing the testing, continuation of the testing process that we have started in our district over a month now. So this information was presented, excuse me, was presented as Dr. Baker mentioned at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. And we are also planning for an upcoming meeting with our CTA and CSCA to discuss this further. So we're working on scheduling that right now. But some of these slides will be reviewed and some of these slides will be new. And so I'll highlight those as we move forward. So as you may recall, we entered into a contract with Curative of actually expanded up and down the peninsula in various aspects with other districts and offering testing to community members as well and students and so forth, even off campuses. And so since October 28th, we have been providing the employee testing. And a big kudos to the office staff who have been helping and assisting with the clerical portion of the testing. But the requirement is any employee that will be onsite at any time is required to test. And we do this on a two-week rotation, although it's only required right now to be tested once a month. We also are offering student testing. So this is not mandated, but we are encouraging tested. And we also have the option of twice a month. This cost is funded by the district and not by parents. And so we encourage parents to seek this out. Also, with the Curative mobile locations that are around the peninsula, we are able to actually have a student be tested elsewhere, even if a family wants that to be done off campus on the weekend or what have you. And we are able to seek those test results. That's really helpful in the tracking and tracing process. And then there's a link here for free testing opportunities, of course. We have the same type of similar process for students where we receive results within 48 hours. No cost of bonus, as I had mentioned, and students that are in person on campus right now in either hubs or in pilot classrooms are being offered this opportunity to test on campus on the regular basis, similar to employees. So diving into the tech, tracking and tracing, as you recall, we are still, of course, following the pandemic recovery framework. That is how we communicate all of the needed information and what the next steps are for our employees or our students, whether isolation is needed or if there's a positive case, if there's an exposure, et cetera. And the most recent framework was updated in November. And so we received that as soon as it's hot off the press and make any amendments as needed. And of course, we do follow all of these other organizations as well. In part of the tracking and tracing process, there is a wellness survey, a screening that we ask employees and students to complete each day. And it's required so that we can be very thorough in the tracking and tracing process. And it's quite complex. And so I really want to appreciate Erin Caicos, the Director of HR, who is spending a lot of her time working on making sure that notifications are happening in a timely fashion and as appropriate based on the framework. And so we do ask the employees whether that they have had various symptoms and so forth. And we check on the temperature and that's mid every day. And so we have been doing this since July and feel confident that we have a good, strong process in place. We also ensure that our visitors, that includes parents or anyone visiting the site, are asked these various questions as well so that we can continue on with their appointments, especially now during registration. This is a really vital process because some parents are spending more than 15 cumulative minutes in the office, getting assistance as needed in their appointment. And then, as I mentioned, students as well. Antonio Perez, our Director of Student Services and Assessment, handles all of student testing and the screening form and so forth. And so he has a process that he's worked with the principals of students who are on campus right now and plans, of course, to return in January to ensure that of course, to return in January to ensure that we have every student completing this form prior to walking on campus, and that includes the temperature taking as well. And so that tracking system also allows for us to ensure that the people are getting the right notifications at the right time. The student addendum, this was developed by the district and RCTA, and it does align with our behavior plans that are already in place, and so it's an addendum. And the goal is to really highlight the new changes to a typical student day that parents and students need to agree to and be aware of if they're going to be coming back on campus. And so for classrooms that haven't started yet, this addendum in which they need to review and sign and 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 put their child's information as well so that can be clear. This is a communication tool to delineate all of our expectations. Liz had mentioned the arrival, drop off and pickup, distancing, the hand washing requirements, and the fact that materials, food, et cetera, is not going to be shared on campus. And there will be disciplinary action if we are moving in a direction, if a student is not participating in these essential activities. And so that will be worked out with the teacher, the administrator and the parent. We do really need to make sure that students are going to adhere to this, and so far, so good in terms of the students that have been on campus, but we want to make sure it was very clear in this document. So when we are tracking and tracing, there are three categories. There is a case, a person that is positive, a close contact to a positive person, and then an indirect contact. And so Erin and Antonio spend their time determining based on interviewing and investigating situations who falls in these various categories when we learn of information. And so coming up is Assembly Bill 685, which I'll talk to about in just a moment, that will expand upon what we're already doing in terms of notification. And once again, we are following this framework. The link here is actually a great document to review scenarios at sites that really delineates exactly what needs to happen. If a student or a staff member tests positive, what happens to the hub or the classroom? Or if it's in a non-classroom setting, who needs to be communicated with and so forth, and that's where we follow the guidance. So regarding AB 685, this is new, and this is a new slide for all of you, for the board. And this requires that the district provide campus-wide notifications of positive cases within one business day to the employees, any contracting agencies, contractors we have on campus, our construction workers, anyone who is on campus, union leadership, and this is effective January 1st, 2021. However, we started implementing this on December 1st because we really wanted to make sure we had any kinks worked out. We had all the contact information of our construction workers, a big kudos to Don Diaz, who responds immediately so we can make sure we're tracking all the individuals that need to have that information. As you will notice, students and families are not on this list under AB 685. But we have decided, of course, led by Dr. Baker, that we will be implementing communication of a positive case on January 1st, although it's not required by law, we really want to go above and beyond the call of duty to inform families. We already are informing our employees and so forth, but informing families that there is a positive case. So what that will look like is a text message in which information will be provided that there was a positive case on X school campus, for example. So that is going to be in effect starting January 1st. And then with AB 65, the information that we do provide really gives guidance to employees based on whether or not they're a case, a close contact or an indirect contact. The key portion in the investigation is to find out who the individual was within six feet of that infected person for at least 15 cumulative minutes over a 24-hour period. So that could look like 15 minutes altogether, more than 15 minutes, or 15 one-minute interactions, for example. So that level of detail, that detail is what Antonio and Erin are spending a lot of their time with, to me. That could potentially have been exposed. We also have to make sure that we're starting two days before symptoms are noted, or if there's an asymptomatic person, two days prior to the date that the employee or student tested. And then, of course, that person will be isolated. We also want to just remind everybody that we do have a Redwood City School District staff. If remote work duty is possible within their job description, we encourage people to continue working. Of course, if they are feeling asymptomatic, if they are feeling symptoms, we want them to get the rest and care and so forth that they need. And then we still do have the Family First Coronavirus Response which adds to FMLA, the Family Medical Leave Act. We do still have on record, this is supposed to expire on December 31st. I've received no update on that. To it for it to be test. Great job analyzing what needs to happen next. So we do know that there will be isolation if we do learn of a positive case, and that tracking and tracing, as I mentioned, occurs. And then we also look at how it affects the cohorts now. So based on following the framework, the route of whether or not a hub needs to close or not close is determined. And so with a positive case, that does occur. And then Martin Cervantes, our Director of Facilities, sends his crew in and makes sure that there's proper cleaning and disinfecting of classrooms or any other space in which somebody who was positive spent a considerable amount of time. I do want to note that if a child does show symptoms and or within the wellness survey, if the student notes that they have had symptoms or someone close in their household has had symptoms, we want to make sure that the student does remain at home and that the parent informs the school office. If which child starts showing symptoms at school after they've completed a wellness survey and said there were no symptoms or no temperature, but if it's determined later in the day, then we do have a separate area set aside, which is laid out in the reopening plan. So one exciting item I'd like to present to you tonight, and I'd like to thank Jorge Quintana, our Director of Communications, Erin and Antonio for putting this together. There was a desire to really communicate with our with the public, with our community, with our staff, what the COVID data looks like specifically to our district. And so this chart, there's I put the websites here on our website is this information, and I'm going to click on it now so you can see here. And if you'll notice on our website, it's in the newsroom. That's where this page is housed, and it, this website shows this chart, which I have on the presentation. And in this chart, we are tracking and communicating to the public each week. So this is updated every Thursday afternoon. So for it will be updated tomorrow afternoon, the number of positive cases district-wide, and then as a result, whether or not cohorts or hubs needed to move to distance learning, and then when the date of return to campus.
Wendy, we can't see that website. I think it might be because you're just sharing the presentation.
Oh, but I'm sorry. Okay.
Look at it later.
Okay, so there is, there is. Okay, so let me go over the chart one more time. Thank you for that, Janet. So on the then then the date to return to campus, and I mentioned it will be updated again tomorrow. And so if you notice here, we do have nine positive cases since we started tracking this back in this is full weeks with approximately 400 to 500 people working district-wide on any given day. So we wanted to make sure that we update this regularly, that we can see the impact. You may have heard in the news that the governor has mentioned that, you know, the schools are doing well in this regard and implementing PPE and so forth. And so we were really interested to find out how it affected us in Redwood City. And so we now have the support for that. On that website as well is a really nice guide about definitions of cases of positive people quarantine, et cetera, and an FAQ for families that we will be building as we go along. So that's a new addition to our website, and I'm pleased that that will be available for the public to view at any time. And so that will also be communicated to our unions very soon. Okay, and next, just reminder, these are the individuals in charge, and that concludes the presentation for tonight. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Wendy. I can't see the board, so if you would like to ask a question or make a comment, go ahead.
Hi, Janet. I would like to, if that's okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Wendy, I thought it might be helpful, well, either for you or for Dr. Baker. One of the questions I had asked at one of our, I don't know if it was a parent meeting or Superintendent Advisory Committee meeting, when I've heard about the dashboard is just, I asked the question about, you know, what I've been reading about research is that we're going to see positive cases in the school kind of mirrored in the community of which we're serving, right? Because people are going to contract COVID in a family gathering or something like that. So far, our data shows us that because we're following the four protocols and we're doing all these safety measures, we have not seen any transmission of those positive cases within our school site. So maybe you could just clarify that because I think it's important for our audience members to hear that because it gives me a lot of comfort that we're following the four, the protocols. Therefore, at least to date, we're not seeing transmission of those positive cases. They're coming in from the outside. We quarantine, we do what's right, and everybody's safe. So if you could talk to that a little bit.
Correct, and it doesn't spread, and it hasn't spread, you know. We've done the protocol of, you know, making sure that we quarantine, for example. If there is one of the pilot classrooms where a student has tested positive, we quarantine that classroom for the 14 days. And then, of course, there's testing that is done, and I can't remember the exact, it's not done within the first few days of their quarantine. I think maybe five to six or seven days, then they take the test again to determine if the viral load has created, if it's larger, it created another positive test as opposed to having a negative one. So I have not seen it spread, Elisa. You are correct. That has not been the case. We follow the protocols. We definitely make sure that we're in contact with the county health department, and we're also in contact with the County Office of Education. Erin takes care of the, whether our employees, if they are, they test positive, and Antonio takes care of the students in regard to their testing positive and work with the families. But one step further that we are going to go, which we will start on January 1st, which is not part of AB 685, which goes into effect on January 1st, is when there is a positive case at one of our hubs, at one of our pilot programs, then what we will do is we will make that communication, take that communication effort out towards the that whole school community as opposed to maybe just to do it towards that classroom. It will go school-wide and community-wide. And of course, we follow the HIPAA guidelines. We're not mentioning any types of names or anything like that, but I think people start to speculate when you quarantine a classroom. But we're not, you know, we will, I feel for transparency, it's best to do that. We don't have to, but I feel for transparency. It's better for the district. The other piece is that with this dashboard that was put together, that is really good information for the community, for our teachers and for our staff to know what is happening during this COVID environment. As we heard just, you know, days ago, you know, we were back into the red and and San Mateo County is not in the shelter in place. And we are one of, what, I think there are only two of us that did not go in that direction, if I'm not mistaken. And Dr. Morrow said he felt it was best that we do not do this at this point in time. But I believe what the indicators are, if our ICU beds drop below 15%, that would possibly trigger a shelter in place. But then again, that is in his wherewithal to deem if that's necessary or not, if we'll go in that direction. And I know as board members, many of you have been on those phone calls with county health and the county manager and so forth.
Yeah, I think what Dr. Scott Morrow was saying is that what he's seen in our county is that the transmissions from one person to another are happening more in these small family gatherings or larger fam, or larger gatherings, and that he wasn't seeing it in the businesses or the schools because we're following the protocols. So I think that's important. If we want to see the rates go down, people need to basically try to not gather.
Not gather, not travel.
Can I add just one item too as well, which I forgot to mention in the presentation? So as you know, this past week was Cyber Monday, and I bring that up because we did have with testing, and I mentioned, I see someone mentioned it in the chat too, we did have an issue with UPS, actually, because of the, all of the, you know, I guess, online orders, what have you. There was a delay in UPS delivering to Curative. We're watching, you can see that the tracking of UPS and how your boxes get to the Curative lab, and we thought it's sitting at UPS, it's sitting at UPS, what's happening? So we have noticed that glitch this week. I'm hoping that will work out, but as we go into this holiday season, that was a little concerning because we're actually counting on that schedule for that to move forward. And with Curative getting larger and larger, you know, they're adding more workers in the lab and so forth. And so I do want to point out that as a district, we are following through and having everyone test, sending on them off, but sometimes there are things beyond our control that are coming up, so in these next couple of weeks possibly. I just wanted to recognize that. That was something that just came up recently.
So I just am thrilled that you're doing that. Human nature is if I don't know, my mind will make make it much worse. And I think this makes us very transparent and allows the parents to know what's going on and not have to come up with their own situation, you know, kind of like they'll hear a rumor and then it just kind of keeps going and going and going. So I think this is great. Thank you for doing this.
Maria or Cecilia?
I just think it's great as well. Dennis said it's really good information for the community to have. So updated, you might want to put that there if it doesn't say what day it's being updated, like others I've seen, it's updated on this day by this time. And then on the UPS issue, if it continues, because, you know, a lot of people are not going into the stores, have we thought about delivering or hiring someone to deliver to Curative?
That's possible.
I haven't.
They used to deliver packets before, so.
Right. No, it's a good point on both of those items. I'll make another bet.
Is the the location that it's shipped to, is it local? I think they were Redwood City, right?
I'm not sure about that, if they're local or not. That's that's a piece that we need to check out. I thought they were somewhere down south.
Yeah, I have to check.
California. That's what I thought.
Yeah, I see that in the chat. Must be saying that it went to LA County. So that might not work to have somebody deliver it.
But the but in the nature of many of school districts now using Curative in San Mateo County, maybe it would be to their best interest to have something up here, you know, up in this, in the Bay Area. Because from what I understand now, yes, San Mateo County, a lot of us are using it, even Menlo Park has started using Curative. And there are other school districts in Alameda County that have started using it also. So it may be worth their time to have something here in the Bay Area. And I'll talk to Nancy McGee about that and see, you know. about that and see, you know, because we're under the county also had umbrella, they contracted with Curative, and then we went under their contract. So I will mention that because there are more, it's more being used more by other districts in the Bay Area, not just now San Mateo County.
I think it is worth noting that, you know, if we're talking about returning in classroom in January, that's past the holiday shopping season too. So hopefully UPS will have a lighter load.
Yeah, I was really surprised when I took mine on Monday, it was back right away, it was back on Wednesday. I mean, on Wednesday morning when I'd like sitting there on them, so.
There was a question in the chat that hub and pod are used interchangeably, is that correct?
Yes. Not exactly.
No, okay.
They're similar but different, it's like a Venn diagram. So the, the hub is run by either an outside partner or we're hiring our own hub guest teachers, right? They don't have teaching credentials, but they operating as kind of full-time substitutes that are providing connectivity, access, supports for kids in a room with up to 14, 15 students from different grade levels, different classrooms, and they've got their schedules that they're paying attention to. The pods are an agreement that has been signed recently with our teachers' union, that teachers who are returning to use their classroom while operating in distance learning may supervise a small group of children in their class who won't necessarily be their students either. But what we're trying to do is provide support for as many students as possible full site to help them stay connected and help them have more successful distance learning experiences. So the pods, while, and we've used them sort of interchangeably in the past, we're separating them now as the pods being Redwood City teachers. But the teachers themselves are really pretty much focused on their own distance learning classes that they're teaching within their room, whereas the hubs have the full-time people who are just monitoring the students all the time. They're not trying to do teaching and other things at the same time.
Okay, thank you for that. So I went over to the district website to see that, that the chart and all the data, which I think is great. I think it's going to be really important to be transparent with all that information. And I see that it's in the banner sliding across the top, is that going to stay there? How will people find it if they don't know the direct link?
So what we can, that's a good question. That, that banner that goes across, it says COVID, I think COVID-19, then you have to, you have to click on the banner, and then on the left-hand side, if I recall correctly, there's several different links that you can go to, and the new data, the dashboard is, I think, the last link. So what I can do is work with Jorge to put something in, communicate out to the community that it's there, and that's where it's located, and maybe I can get Michelle to do a great graphic, because she's really great in these graphics on when we're putting stuff on the website and where to go and what to click to give to it. So I'll talk to Jorge tomorrow about that.
Okay, thanks. Were there any other questions or comments? I do have two speakers cards also, but Cecilia, did you have anything?
Sure, I just wanted to thank everyone from the administration to all the staff members that have been working, you know, diligently, day and night, pretty much around the clock. I know that everybody's following the, the protocols, and I do appreciate that we are taking all the safety precautions for the kids to come back in January. And then I didn't mention, I was part of the superintendent advisory meeting, and I did mention that there's a video out there where it would let the families know that the testing is very simple, and it would be nice to, again, perhaps get a text out to the parents or an email so that perhaps more parents would be more prone to getting their kids tested at school, you know, without having any fears. A simple test, you, you know, swipe the inside of their mouth and that's about it. So again, that's the only comment that I have. Again, I want to thank everyone for all your hard work, and that's it. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So we'll take the speaker cards. Everybody okay with that? Okay, um, so let me go back. So our first speaker is Catherine Stewart, and I have not seen her in the audience this evening.
I think she said, "The William Stewart."
Oh, okay, got it. Yep, hand raised. So I'll go ahead and share my screen with the timer.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi. Well, I had one more wonderful idea for you, which is we have a great opportunity to reset the playground behavior patterns, which means basically all the horrible little habits that we had out on the playground, since everybody's been at home for so long, they've sort of had a chance to sort of get a breath of fresh air out on the playground and not be doing that. So when they go back to school, I think it'd be really nice if we took another look at how we can make the playground a safer, bully-free zone and have the kids enjoying themselves safely. And I think one of the key things is we noticed that at the bakery tech space, the school library in the garden, those are all places where bad behavior is not tolerated or allowed, so it doesn't happen there. And yet we know on the playground, there are key places where, over the years, you notice that there's some areas where there's just bad stuff just keeps happening. So my thought is, we could try to sort of re-choreograph the interactions in those areas and focus on those areas. And I think that the time to do that is before the bulk of children come back on campus. You're going to have some kids who, you know, TK in kindergarten have never been to school, and then you have some kids who were only there for half the year. So I think this is a great opportunity to reset those behaviors and that expectation of the standards of behavior on the playground. In particular, I'd like to see the things that lead up to fighting stopped before they escalate that way. For example, play fighting and battling and that sort of thing can be stopped and just having, by having the adults say, "Don't do that," knock it off, and saying, "Go over there, you go over that way, and junior, you go the other way," and separating the people who are having problems and that kind of thing. So I think there are a lot of really key things that could be done if we actively supervise the playgrounds, and this is a great opportunity to do that because you're coming back fresh. And COVID had a lot of weird things going on, but good things can happen too. So this is a good opportunity to look at those things again with fresh eyes and see the things, the areas that did work for us in the past, and try to model more closely the playground experience so nobody has to be afraid to show up to school because they'll get stomped at the playground. Thank you very much, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Catherine. And then we have Sonia Persogio.
Hello?
Hi Sonia, go ahead.
Mine is actually more of a question, thank you for your time. So I'm a, we at Roy Cloud were told that the first to fifth grade teachers chose not to return, and I wasn't sure exactly how that's a choice because I thought that the San Mateo County School Board deemed school essential, and it seems the district has received money through CARES to implement safety protocols, and you guys have done a fabulous job, it sounds like, trying to get this all into play. And I'm just confused as to how our teachers are not returning, and why is it okay for other adults to be in a classroom with children while the teacher's online, but the teacher isn't? And I understand that some teachers might have a disability and, and for that reason, they can't come back, but those that can, I'm just hugely discouraged and disappointed for my child and the school. So I don't know how that's possible, and I don't know if somebody can answer my question.
Thanks Sonia. Dr. Baker, I don't know if you want to address that?
Sure. So what we did is that we, and we've talked about this at previous board meetings, and maybe she must not, hasn't heard this, we had asked our teachers to complete a survey if they were willing to come back to the classroom. In completing the survey, we had a total of 91 teachers within the district who said that they felt that they could not come back to the classroom until there was, the main reason was a vaccine, to have a vaccine. And then they were really concerned about the number of positive cases going up, not only during this Thanksgiving time, and then also possibly during winter break time. So with that being said, Wendy Kelly, who is Deputy Superintendent HR, we looked at the 91, and there is no way that we could abide by 91 teachers, some taking leave, using their sick leave, and some just taking a leave without pay. There is no way to replace 91 teachers with a substitute. It is very difficult during this COVID time to even get a substitute for a teacher who is going on maternity leave. And we have several of those happening in the near future, and we're still looking for subs for those teachers. With that being said, teachers could have just taken the time off, and we'd have no one. And that would be a worse case than what we are right now. So that's why we went into the, in the direction of working with our association for getting some of our teachers that were agreeable to come back. And it ranges at each school, it's, each school is different. So there are some schools that have four or five classrooms coming back, there are some that have very, very few classrooms coming back, and others that there are a majority of them coming back. It was an individual choice by the teacher. If we would have done something in the manner of how I said previously, of granting all the leaves of absences without pay, and those others going on a leave using any of their sick days, we would not be able to even accommodate the distance learning because there is, there are no substitutes out there to be had. And then Wendy, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
No, I think that's correct, Sean. It was really came down to a staffing issue mid-year, and talking to my colleagues up and down the peninsula, and for those that haven't opened or struggling with the exact same thing. So while this was a very difficult choice, I think, knowing all, all that that entails in terms of students, it, it just, our hands were tied in that regard.
You know, maybe I might add, because Dr. Baker, you talked about this at the superintendent advisory committee, that what we're hoping is that as we're successful with our pilot program classrooms, which we have been to date, we have teachers who are teaching in person right now, and then we'll have more classrooms coming online in January, that we're hopeful as we show success and as teachers, teachers, that there may be additional teachers who are comfortable coming back in person as the school year moves on. So I think, Dr. Baker, you had talked about maybe by March, we may have some additional teachers, but I think it does come down to a staffing issue, and everybody has a different risk profile and comfort level. So for this year, we need to honor that in terms of staffing. So I'll just, I'll just add that to what they already said.
That's true, and the principles are, as we move forward into the spring, revisiting this with their staff, if they feel more comfortable coming back in the spring, and you see that the positive cases are a lot lower, that maybe if we move into the orange, that they're going to, we're going to start to revisit this again for those schools who are having not as many classrooms open up with in-person learning. So we have talked about that at our principal meetings also, that they're going to move forward in that direction too, to see if they can get more in-person learning occurring at their sites as we see the change in the positive cases within San Mateo County itself, and if San Mateo County also goes up into the orange, or maybe even into the yellow, that's a good sign, that's a good time to let's revisit, let's see if we can get you back. Let's, we've got all our proper protective equipment in place, we've got our COVID testing in place, let's see if we can come back. So it's not a closed door, it's just that right at this point in time, when we did the initial survey, those were the numbers that we received, and we talked about that at length to see what we can do. Now, when we talk about the guest teachers that we have, these people are not teachers, they're not instructing. What they are doing, as this book indicated, is that they're making sure that these students who are having a difficult time with the virtual learning, that they're definitely logging on to be in class with the teacher virtually, that they're completing their assignments, and that they're, you know, doing more than what they would be doing if they were at home, where there was no parent there at all to assist them. So that's what the hub instructor does. The pod person is there are some teachers that are in the classrooms that are not coming back, but have agreed to take a few students who are having difficulty, so they can just monitor them while they're doing distance learning at the same time. And that is happening at quite a few of the schools too, beginning in January. And that was an agreement that was also created with the teachers' association. The teacher can offer instructional support for those students also that are with them in the pod, if, you know, I can't connect, I need help with something that, you know, was given to me in this assignment, and maybe the teacher is able to assist in that fashion.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? That was all we have for the speaker cards. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to 13.2, the first reading and discussion of board policy, 5131.8, mobile communication devices.
Thank you, and thank you to Janet and Elisa for meeting, as they are on the board policy committee. And so we did spend some time a couple of weeks ago looking at additional board policies, and these are going to be coming often to you. So thank you for your patience and, and your thorough reading of this information. So this particular policy on mobile communication devices is brand new. It's a new policy that really addresses smartphones and other types of devices that could be on campus, pagers from back in the day, I don't know if those still exist, but anyway, pagers. And really, when and how these items should be used, we do recognize that there, that, that students may need to be using these during non-instructional time, for example, after school to contact a parent or to coordinate so forth. But during instructional time, we really want to make sure that these devices are only being used under certain circumstances. And so those are outlined in the board policy, and that's, that's important regarding medical conditions, or if a teacher administrator grants permission for a specific assignment, sometimes that does happen perhaps in the middle school, in case of an emergency, of course, and then if there is any items regarding that in IEP. And then also wanting to make sure that we are outlining the fact that it shouldn't infringe upon anyone else's privacy. So taking pictures of students is, of course, is not appropriate, or other types of privacy issues. We also recognize, and always has been, that is, if we are in suspect, we could search for a device as we would in an appropriate manner. And so this board policy really is outlining this, I want to say new technology, it's really not new, but it is a board policy that is new to us. And so I'm, I'm presenting this tonight for a first read, and I'm wondering if you have any questions about that.
So Wendy, it's been a few weeks since the policy committee met and talked about this, and I feel like it was, you know, six months ago. Do you recall if we have checked whether Do you recall if we have checked whether or not our search and seizure board policy is up to date?
Actually, ours is more up to date than the CSBA one that's currently listed.
Okay, thanks. Board members, you have any questions?
I do. And I apologize, I totally forgot to email you prior to the meeting. On the board policy, and I was trying to just click it open right now, where it talks about that I believe a student can, I forget how it was worded, kind of get in trouble if they use their phone, even if it's outside of school. I'm wondering if parents are going to be notified by the school district that this could happen to their child, just so that they don't be surprised?
Yes. So this information would be provided normally in a handbook, and certainly the beginning of the year documents. But with this new information, it will be communicated out. And typically, and, and, you know, we've had instances with students, of course, with phones for many years now. And what happens is that that information is usually proactively told to the families with appropriate disciplinary action if need be, you know. And sometimes it's just simply put your phone away, that type of thing. But this policy does say that it, that a student could be subject to discipline. But in regards to the communication, yes. And certainly the non-instructional time, it does state in the policy that the students could potentially be using it during non-instructional time, but that, that the student would need to follow any of the individual school site rules that were imposed. So that starts with the communication upfront. So since this is mid-year, this would be information I would provide to the schools to send out to their families.
Thank you.
So I had one quick question. Cell phones are pretty obvious, but if you have like an Apple iWatch, what's the thinking on that?
Well, since it can be used as a mobile communication device, the same rules would apply.
Yeah, but the policy says I'm supposed to turn it off, so you're gonna ask me to turn my watch off, so I can't see what time it is?
Well, that's a good point, because it is linked.
I don't know the answer, by the way.
Yeah, good point.
Dennis, I'm not, I, I've seen the watches, but I don't own one. Can you turn off the, the mobile function of it, so it's just operating like a watch? Or is it so integrated that it's on all the time?
I don't know the answer.
Somebody in the chat just said that there's a school or do not disturb setting on it now.
Oh, that's nice. There you go.
Thank you. That, that saved me some research. Thank you for that. Make a note of it.
Thank you for the person who responded.
Yes.
Anything else? This is just a first reading, so we'll have to come back for approval. Nothing? Okay. All right, thank you, Wendy.
Welcome.
So, um, let's go ahead with the consent items. We're on item 14. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
So.
Giving it to Dennis. And we're going to use the second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Aye.
Jesse Diasloka?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. Before we move on to the action items, I wanted to check with the board and superintendent. It's 8:57. We have actually been on Zoom calls together since 4:30 without a break in between. Does anybody need a break? Want to take five minutes? Yes? Okay.
That'd be great.
I'm gonna, do you want five minutes or 10?
I think five's fine.
Okay. Okay, so we will take a five-minute break, and then we'll move on to action items. Dr. Baker, are you taking that, or this is?
Yes, I am taking that. I'm sorry. I was just listening to, I caught the news. They were talking Berkeley Unified School District is really pushing the governor and the legislature to make sure that teachers is one of the first right after the medical profession to get the vaccine. So I was watching that right before moving it. I know, I know CSBA is doing their job of trying to get that up there too. That'd be great. That'd be really good. Okay, so the grand jury. This is a response to the 2019-20 report. And so all school districts within San Mateo County had to respond to the report. And Kyle worked with this also. Many of you recall when the county office of ed had the ransomware, do you remember that, about two years ago? And there was, one of our schools within the county also had that problem. And they did not have, they did not feel they had the proper security. And so they went ahead and paid the ransom, which was over $200,000. I think it was 260, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of $60,000. So what the grand jury wanted to know was you have, they gave, they wanted information from us, and then they wanted us to come back with a response. And so with the help of all the people, all the IT directors in each of the school districts, and our director being Kyle Brumba, they gave information to Claire Cunningham, who is now the chief deputy counsel, so that she could help us develop the response and tailor it for our district, for our district to respond back to the grand jury. So our security is a lot, was a lot better than others. And I'm gonna have Kyle give you a little brief information about that. And then you can ask me any other questions about the responses that are on here at this point in time.
Okay, so thank you, Dr. Baker. I want to say a big thank you, first of all, to Dennis for your service on the board. You might hear on the video later, it's, I always have to ask myself, what is Dennis going to ask? When, when I get on a board meeting, so, because I know he's always gonna pose a good question to me. And I also want to thank the board, the bond program, because the position we're in right now is because of the funding that we have from our bond program. So over the last two years, we've actually replaced 10 physical servers, which actually held 25 virtual servers. We replaced that with one server cluster that now contains all 25 virtual servers and a few more additional servers that we virtualized through this process. We also then have a identical or redundant cluster in our data center over at Hoover School. And at Hoover, we have a device that is called a Store Once. And what that does is it takes snapshots of all of our servers and holds them in a location where they cannot be accessed by anyone until we actually connect to that device and have that information or that storage come back into our system. So it's what protects us from ransomware, so that our files cannot get infected from that, from a ransomware attack. We use some tools called Veeam and Store Once that allow us to keep that data secure. So that's how we're protecting ourselves from ransomware. And that is basically for our most critical data, which is our business service data, our human resources data, and our student records data. So those three departments have their data there. All of the teacher and student data is all held in their Google Drive accounts. And we actually pay for another service to replicate all of the data that we have in Google Drive, and that gets replicated three times a day. So if we ever had an incident where files from a student machine or from a teacher machine were ever infected with ransomware, we would just zero out and completely blank out the hard drive, and then the teachers would be able to recover all of their data from their Google Drive accounts, because that's all replicated a few times a day. So that's really the way that we're addressing all of the different ransomware concerns that may arise.
So do you have any questions in regard to the response to the grand jury? And a lot of the responses that are on here were what we agree along with Claire's assistance that we are abiding to.
Yeah, I would just like to reinforce what Kyle said. I have a client that I can't name because of an NDA, but they, they got hit with ransomware, and they were basically out of business for like a month, and they ultimately paid $700,000. And so what Kyle's doing by keeping that separate database is really important, because they just kept backing up and backing up. And then what they ended up doing is they were basically contaminating their backups each time they did it. The one question I had is, section two, it talks about these confidential internal reports should be provided to the governing board by June 30th. When do you anticipate that happening?
So we're looking at the format that the county would like us to use for those reports. We already have the data to put into those reports. We're just waiting for the format that the county council and the county technology directors would like to use to format those reports.
Thank you. And is there, do we have any way to protect that from the Freedom of Information Act?
I do not know that to be true. That would be a question for county council.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is they're using the word confidential, but if, you know, anybody can get it, we want to, we should make sure we don't have anything in there that kind of gives away what we're doing.
Right, right. I mean, the only additional protection that we could put on our data would be then to replicate to the cloud. So we're already replicating on a separate device, but if we wanted to ensure our data one step further, which would be the, the last step that we could potentially ever do would be to replicate to the cloud.
That's going to be pretty cheap, isn't it?
The price is getting lower. We did, when we put in our new data center, we did investigate some of that pricing. We're hoping for the cost to come down a little bit more, so that it's cost effective for us to do so.
Well, great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Kyle, I wanted to say thank you very much. I know I had a lot of questions when I read this, and then I had attended a session last week at the CSBA Annual Conference about cyber attacks. And you're able to give me a lot of assurance in terms of all the various trainings our staff are getting and precautions that the tech team is taking with our data. So thank you very much for all that you're doing, because it is really important in this day and age.
You're welcome.
And I would echo my thanks, and I would like us to keep the backing up to the cloud idea somewhere so that it doesn't get lost. I think that we need to do everything we can to make sure that if one system doesn't work, the other one does. So as the price comes down, I would like to see us take that step in the future. And Kyle, thank you very much to you and your staff for all you do for, to keep our students going and the whole operation running.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this, Cecilia, you went unmute. Are you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing, of course. Thank you very much, Kyle, for everything that you're doing. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you, Kyle, and your team too. This is an action item, so is there a motion to approve? Moved. Alisa?
Second.
Followed by Maria. And a roll call vote, please.
Jesse McBride?
Aye.
Jesse Marquez?
Aye.
Jesse Diasloka?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
10.2, LCFF Budget Overview for Parents.
Good evening, everyone. Kyle, if you could let me present, I would like to open the, the budget overview for parents.
So you should have that option. Do you have share screen at the bottom in the green?
Oh, share screen. Okay, thank you. Oh, um. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So the budget overview for parents is related to the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, or we call it LCP, that was approved by the board on September 30. So as you may recall, for 2021 fiscal year, the three-year Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP, was suspended because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So instead of the LCAP, the state required all school districts to submit or present the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, we call it LCP, which requires the district to describe all the actions that they would take to either offer in-person instruction or distance learning, and also to, to describe the actions and services that they will take to address learning loss. So this budget overview for parents is designed to provide a quick summary of the LCP budgeted expenditures in relation to the total general fund budget of the district. So this report, this is in a, in a template that was established by the Department of Education in September. So there are three pages to this template. The first chart, I just want to go over what this means. So this blue big pie chart here is the district's general fund revenue at first interim. So in total, this blue pie is equivalent to 112.3 million. So this light blue portion of it is the LCFF revenues. It's the LCFF funding that we get as a basic aid district. So the total of that is 83.1 million. So this gray pie here is that 83.1 million coming from LCFF sources. So, so the seventh supplemental on concentration grant, which is generated by the duplicated pupils, foster youth, English language learner, and low-income students. So in total, these, it's 83.1 million compared to the total general fund budget of 121.3. So that's on the first page of the report. And then this second chart on the second page is just showing how much expenditures we have included in the Learning Continuity Plan. So if you add up all of the actions and services that, that we will be expending this year to provide in-person learning for, or distance learning, or to address learning loss, we have a total of 76.3 million. So included in that number is the supplemental concentration grant that will be spent principally for students that have high needs. So that's 8.7 million, which include the carryover balances from 2019-20, when we closed the books. So the third chart on the third page is just showing how much was the revenue calculation last year. Supplemental concentration grant is 8.2 million, but we spent 7.8 million. So there's 423,000 in carryover, which we included in the budget for this year. So the rest are narratives of what, what is some of the few items that are planned to be spent this year to address learning loss. And thank you to Liz Wall for helping us with the narratives. And, and so these are just a few of the requirements. You know, we only input this financial information, and this template is generated with CDE software. So once this is approved and adopted by the board, we will present it. We'll submit it to the county office of education, and then they are gonna review it, making sure that whatever we put in our LCP or the Learning Continuity Plan are fully covered in our And then they are going to review it, making sure that whatever we put in our LCP or the learning continuity plan are fully covered in our first interim report. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board? None? Great. Thank you, Priscilla. So this is an action item, so we would need a motion to approve.
Then a close, thank you. So moved.
Maria? Is there a second?
Everybody's asleep tonight. I think Cecilia did a second.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Okay, Cecilia, thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Justin McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Justin D. Silken?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Okay, and 15.3 approval of the 2020, 21 first interim budget report.
So can everybody see, everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so again, this we're submitting to you for approval, the first interim report, which shows the budgetary status of the district as of October 31. So these again includes the multi-year projection for two years, for the next two years. And in this report, the governing board is required to certify whether we are able to meet our financial obligation for the current year and the next two years. And for this report, the certification is positive. So in the event, in the event that we are not able to meet, we either certify qualified or negative. So for this year, I would like to start with with our student population, I'm sorry. So for this year, if you project 30, based on the the projection from our, with our consultant decision inside. So based on actual our enrollment is 6,771. So you see in purple by grade level and by ethnicity on the green level. Our grant is slightly down. We are at 60%. Last year it's down to 59%. So again, this report shows the actual trend, that the one in green are actual enrollment from the past close year. And then the projection that we have here for the next two years, currently this is actual count at 6,771. Next year, the the projection from the demographic study we got from decision insight is slightly increased in 2021, 22. But 22, 23 to 2030, the projection is continuing decline in enrollment. So this is just, or you know, the district funds, we have seven district funds, general fund being our main operating fund. Then we have a child development cafeteria, deferred maintenance building, capital facilities, and the specialist fund. So as I mentioned earlier, with the budget overview for parents, our total revenue is 112.3 million. And as you can see in this pie chart, the largest portion of that is coming from the local control funding formula or LCFF. And based on the property taxes that we receive from the San Mateo County Controller's Office, we will remain basic aid and based on our projection, we will continue to be a basic aid district. So the one in red are our, are the calculated LCFF revenues for the district. And we, of course, continue to have a 1.6 million in parcel taxes. That's 2% of our budget. Local revenues are from our, from donations and from funding from private and and also with our education foundation and other companies that are continue to support the district. Lottery is 1%, and we receive other state revenues. And this federal revenue here of 10% include the CARES Act fund, funding of about 7 million. AB 602 calculation. So that's 112.3 million revenues in general fund this year, and our expenditure is 115.6 million. So expenditure we have here is for certificate, certificated classified and employee benefits. Services and other operating expenditures and books and supplies, this is higher this year because of the one-time federal funding from CARES Act. So this, this chart here shows the total revenue of 112.3 and expenditure of 115.5. And as you can see, we're deficit spending by 3.2 million. But that is without any transfer from the RDA. So this, this slide just shows the main groupings for our general fund budget. We have the unrestricted and routine restricted maintenance. This is our general operations. And mainly our LCFF funding is here for, for, for the school district's operation. This portion of special ed is about 20% of our budget. So that's for special ed and it's funded from a Selpa, the county office Selpa through AB 602. And then the other groupings is the categorical programs. And this includes all the federal and state funding that we get that have a specific spending requirements. It also includes our local donations that that's generated and also have a specific spending purpose. So I would, in the next slides, I'm going to talk about the unrestricted general fund more as this is the indicator of our fiscal position. So I'm sorry. So this chart shows the unrestricted general fund only, and I what, I just wanted to compare it with what you've approved in June for the unrestricted general fund. So as you can see in this slides, total revenues increased by 3.2 million. Expenditures also increased by about 2 million. However, because we have generated additional revenues here as a basic aid district, there is no need for us anymore to transfer that 2.4 million from RDA. So that's eliminated in as here, a reduction in the programs. So the net impact on the general fund comparing it from the approved budget is a decrease of 637,000. So going back to the revenues here, the increase of about 3 million, including the supplemental on concentration grant is because of main reasons. So first, we receive our P1 estimate, period one estimate for property taxes from the county. And it showed 2.1 million. When we adopted the budget, the assumption was a 5% increase in property taxes. The P1 estimate showed about 8.5 1 million additional funding for us to share with the charter schools. So in addition to that, if you recall, when we adopted the budget, that was based on May revised governor's proposal, which included a cut in LCFF funding by about 10. We still had to contribute 10%, like our basic aid fair share at that time. So since that was eliminated with the enacted budget, that generated another 1.2 million for us. So that's the reason for the increase in revenues. There are minor adjustments here in lottery and transportation rate revenue and some local fees that we charged for charter schools. So in the expenditure side, we have incurred additional expenditures, which are mostly related to the actions that we have to take to address the students' need due to COVID-19 pandemic. So there were additional FTEs, like the learning hub of teachers. We have additional resource teacher. Only the teachers' union was settled. So after budget adoption, RCAA, which is the administrators group, was also settled. So the RCA includes certificated and some classified administrators. So that's also part of the increase. And on the classified, we added additional FTEs for custodian because of the cleaning and safety requirements for COVID-19. So the rest of the employee benefits is an adjustment based on these changes in staffing. But also, you know, there's something in the employee benefits, if you recall, this first and first in behalf, that one, that one is also calculated and there's an increase in the contribution. So the rest here are additional supplies and services that we have to incur in the unrestricted general fund on top of the, the expenditures that we have already included in the CARES Act funding. So the, so the total, also first in terms of 2 million, and I had mentioned about the RDA, there's no much need. And then the increase in the contribution or the decrease in the contribution here for the, for the for the restricted programs is for special ed. They, they have some savings in their budget. And then in other categorical programs, we got more revenues. So so the contribution from unrestricted general fund was reduced at first interim. So these are the changes from budget adoption to the first interim on the unrestricted portion of the general fund. So this is the overall combined restricted and unrestricted. So the one that I wanted to point out to you is what is the components of the fund balance? So with the revenues of 112.3 and expenditure of 1.5, we started the year with 16.2 million. And so we're projecting ending balance to be approximately 13 million. So in the next slide, I would explain, show you what are the components of that 13 million. So for the, for that 12.9 million, we have to meet our minimum state required 3%. So all school districts, we have to put reserve 3% of the total expenditures for the size of our district is 3%. There are higher and some lower. So there's also the board mandated reserve. As we know, the 3% is not enough to have to to maintain fiscal stability. So the board has mandated additional 3%. So for this year, for 2021, we are able to meet both the state mandated and the board mandated reserves. So our total reserve this year is 6%. So the rest of the fund balance covers other obligations of the district. So we have the revolving funds. This is not really cash, but another bank account that we would use whenever we need to write a check for, for someone. And we cannot wait for the county office's schedule, scheduled vendor payment processing period. So we have that always intact at 75,000. We have some prepaid expenditures here. The legally restricted are the categoricals that, that have an ending balance, like the routine restricted maintenance. And we are not, we cannot use those for any other purposes, but we have to carry it over to the next year and spend it for the same purpose. So the board approved a 500,000 emergency fund in 1920. We are keeping that intact, but because we know that we received one-time money from, from the federal government this year. But there's no certainty that we will in the can keep this fund intact for use next year. So there are also unspent grants in the general fund that are also there for some purposes. Or so that's also kept intact. And we have other potential obligations here. And then, and other, other future district obligations. We have 2.3 million here as part of the excess of funding as a basic aid district. So in an ideal situation, we should keep whatever the excess funding until after the end of the fiscal year because things may change during the period when we receive the property taxes. So we have that 2.3 million in there for this year. So this next slide is now going through the multi-year projection. So for first interim, we are required to submit the current year financial position and also make a projection for the next two years. So for the 2021, 22, and 22, 23 year, our projection, as I mentioned, this is based on the the report from decision insight or consultant. Our property tax growth is projected at 0%. So this may be too conservative at this point, but because we are not really uncertain what is the full impact of COVID-19, this is also a recommendation from the county that we would project a 0%. 0% COLA and 0% property tax growth. So for compensation, we, we have no projection. I know that our settlement is only for one year in 2021 for RCTA and RCA. There's no compensation increase included in the multi-year projection. But we have included 1.5% in step on column adjustment for both classified and certificated. These, the STIRS and PRS rate, these are the known information from the state's own proposal, proposal for, for the next two years. We have always projected a 5% increase in health and welfare cost. And the current, this one is the inflation cost for the actually 1.87%. The projection for lottery revenues for next years are the same. It's 150 per ADA for the unrestricted and $14 per ADA for the, for property or the ones that needs to be used for instructional purposes. But with all of these assumptions.
So Priscilla, before you go on to the next page?
Yes.
So when we met, we, we decided that we would keep the property tax growth at zero, just to be conservative. But we also have going the other way, we don't have the raises in. So those will cancel each other out to some extent. So it's not like we're completely 100% conservative, just to make that point.
Correct, correct. The compensation increase is not included in here. So our settlement for the two, two units is only for the 2021 year.
Right. But I didn't want board members to walk away saying, wow, we didn't put in the, the property tax revenue. So we're really understating it because we didn't also put in the increase because we don't know it.
And we still have the operating deficit in all years as well that we need to address at some points.
Yeah, the other, the other point is most basic aid districts have 15% reserves to keep a cushion for property tax reevaluations.
Yes, thank you. So, so I'm going to show you in numbers, using those assumptions. So I'm going to go So I'm gonna go. I'm not sure if you're seeing the full screen. I have like little things on top of my screen that may be blocking your view.
No, it's fine. You're good.
Okay, so so for the first year, so this, this is the one that we just discussed, the 112.3 million. But noted in your in the blue, the blue text, we have included here the the revenues for from leasing the closed sites. So that's 775,000. So this is the Orion location, the Haas lease contracts. And in the following year, we're making an assumption that the Adelanta property will be leased out. So I've added what I estimated at $3 per square foot on that property. So that's included here in in the next two years. So that's an assumption that, you know, depending on what happens with leasing of the property, this may or may not materialize. So and then the expenditures here are were based on that assumption. This the increases in certified and classified are just the 1.5 step and column adjustment. The employee benefits includes the STIRS and PERS contribution, the increased rates each year and 5% estimated increase in health and welfare. So as you can see on the revenue side, I'm sorry and that I'm jumping, you'll see the 11.2 million here in federal funding under the restricted column. That includes the 7% 7 million, approximately 6.9 or 7 million in federal CARES Act funding. So all of that is is removed from the budget because those are one-time and so it's reduced back to 4.3. And the expenditures related to that is also eliminated in the budget here. That's it's placed right now in books and supplies until we submit our final reports. And so that was also eliminated in the projection. So here, as I've mentioned, because of the increase in property taxes, we we did not have the RDA transfer, which we have during budget adoption at 2.4 million. But as you can see, with continued deficit spending, we will be eating our ending balance here that on the third year, we will have to need that subsidy back from Fund 25. So for us to maintain a 3% reserve on the third year, we will need to put in 5.4 million from the RDA funds because of the increasing operating cost with flat revenues from LCFF, federal, state and local in our assumptions. So as you can see at the bottom here on the components of those fund balances, you will see that in the second, in the second year, we are still able to maintain less, but it's it's getting less than the six, the 3% board mandated reserve. I can't find my cursor. Okay, here. But we don't have any more of these, you know, emergency to the the basic aid reserve that we have here. It's gone because of the the deficit that we have here. And then on the third year, we're just meeting the state minimum reserve requirement. So that's our projection for the current and the next two years. So so in my next slide, it's just showing you the the first interim revenues and expenditures and projected fund balance for all of the district funds. So we talk about general fund, the one that I wanted to point out is the cafeteria fund. So as you can see, we started the cafeteria program with 1.2 million in ending balance because of a very low meal participation. If you compare the revenue that we have here from adopted budget, this is cut in half because of low meal participation for our program. The expenditures, labor costs, we cannot reduce because there is restriction on layoffs in 2021. But the reduction in expenditures here is the contract that we have with our consultant, so that so because our contract is based, is built based on the number of meals served. So this one is also so that portion of the expenditure was also reduced correspondingly. So the concern is the deficit of 1.2. As you can see, it's zeroed out the fund balance this year. So and there's still, you know, a pending or negotiations with CSA still pending. So that could be a potential additional cost. And at second interim, we will give you another projection, but there is a possibility that for this program, we might need a contribution from the general unrestricted general fund. So the rest are just deferred maintenance is the same. The building fund, this is our barn modernization and construction projects. So the in the expenditure, we started with 135.7 million when we closed the 2019, 20 books. The revenue that you're seeing here, 1.1 million is just an interest earnings on the fund balance. And then they plan to spend 97.8 this year. So with the ending balance of 39 million, projected ending balance at the end of this fiscal year, this 39 million is basically, most of it is the contingency reserve and the board reserve that we have on the program. So and then we have the capital facilities fund. This is the developer fees and the RDA. So our projected ending balance there is 18.5. Special reserve fund is the balance remaining from the old QAB and we it's only earning interest. This very small amount of expenditures here is what we have spent to prep the Adelanta property and get the permit for that facility. So I would like to talk a little bit about the components of that developer fees in this slide. So as you recall, in the developer fees, we have the RDA portion. So we anticipate that we continue to receive some RDA funds for still the next eight years. And so that revenue is there and a little bit of expenditures. And and we are transferring money from here to support the deferred maintenance of fund because this fund is no longer generating any state contribution. So a portion of the develop, this, these two are coming from developer fees. So we have committed about 10 million of the developer fees money for the bond program. And so part of that those money was already spent in 1920. So there's 5.7 million left. And they plan to spend substantially all of the money this year for for the project. And then there will be about 213,000 left. So this portion is the developer fees that we continue to receive with us of now, no planned projects. So the next in slide is an information about the bond projects. So as you recall, there are three funding sources for the construction and modernization projects. Fund one, Prop 39, the Clean Energy Jobs Act, that's fully spent last year. So then portion of that developer fees fund is this one in the one that I just discussed earlier. And then this is the remaining balance on the proceeds of the the general obligation bond. So as I've mentioned, this is just the interest earnings and then they plan to spend that amount here. So this is the breakdown of the the bond program balances. Okay, so so those are the financial information that we provided for you. So what are the challenges that we anticipate moving forward? So the state is continuing to have deferrals next year in the same level as what we're experiencing this year. So because we're basic aid, we are only receiving a small portion of our revenues from the state. So it's not a high impact for us for the state apportionment. Based on our meetings with the county and the Department of Finance and Legislative Analyst Office, they don't anticipate any federal aid next year. So we we assume a flat funding for whatever we have X removing the CARES Act for the for the future years. Statewide, there's a potential delay in local property tax receipts, but fortunately for us here in San Mateo, we remain Teter district, so which means that we are going to receive our property taxes as scheduled unless they are reconsidering that that Teter status like other counties in the state that are already considering getting out of that plan. So right now and continuing next year, 0% COLA is the best case scenario. So in the past, we have seen a deficit in the COLA actually for for school district. So again, the full effect of COVID-19 is unknown. And so that remains a challenge for us next year. So in the past, I'm sorry, we mentioned about cash flow. Do we need outside borrowing? Do we need all of that for Redwood City? So we did an analysis on our cash flow situation and the form cash is in on page 134 to 137 of Budget Book. So the one, when you look at the form cash, July through October are actual cash balances since those are months that were already done when we prepared the first interim report. And then the following months are projections based on what we've on what we've received last year and the schedules of apportionments that are available to us. So we are required to provide two years of cash flow projections. And so we have that in the report. As you will notice in the report that our cash balances each month is positive for year one, which is this year. But next year, we're seeing negative cash balance for the month of October, November and March. And which is quite normal for a basic aid district because of this schedule of a property tax apportionment. So we usually get 50% in December. So before the October, November is hard cash for us. And we have cash needs there. And then March, you know, is also another challenge, but we get in April, but by June of each year, we get 100% of our property taxes. So this is not quite an issue here in San Mateo because the the county controller's office allows us to have negative fund balance during the year, but not as long as we have a positive cash balance by June. In the months that we have negative cash balance, it will or negative interest, but we don't need to borrow. We don't need to do inter-fund transfer during this time as long as we have positive cash balance at the close of the fiscal year. So what's the next step for us? We are again finalizing our coronavirus or the CARES Act report. For there are three sections of that or funding source for the CARES Act, the coronavirus portion of the CARES Act funding that is to be fully spent by December 30. The final report is due January 6. And we are also working with the auditors now to complete the audit report for the 2019, 20 fiscal year. This year, instead of the December 15 deadline, the state extended it to March 31 due to COVID-19. But we're working with our auditor hoping that we are going, the the report will be finalized in January for us. And then a second interim is due March 15 and then we start to cycle again with the development of the LCAP and the budget for 21, 22 year. So this is all that I have for you today. So that was the end of my presentation. But before I end, I also wanted to thank Dennis for all the support they have for the business office. We know you have invested a lot of time in the business office and we have been used to having you working with us. We feel that you're one of us. You speak our language and you understand what we're going through. And you know, you're there to really put, you know, put us on our toes and always be alert. You ask tough questions. But you, there's a way that, you know, you're dealing with us that we feel so comfortable with you. You personalize things. You ask difficult questions on the budget. But you are also, you know, like asking us how we are, how our families are, you know, so we're really, really you know, sad that you were leaving and we hope you would come by and visit us sometime. And we know that you will continue to be watching the budget in different capacities. So we know that, you know, we, our commitment to you is we will continue to work hard and make sure and help the district maintain fiscal solvency. So thank you again, Dennis. And I'm ready for any questions that you may have on the budget.
Thank you, Priscilla, for the detailed and easy to understand presentation for those of us who don't speak your language. Board, any comments or questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So as you know, we have a budget subcommittee and that's Maria and myself. And so we met and with Dr. Baker and we went through this. And it all looked fine. And then I really think we should think think about it. We have not staffed the finance group with capacity. And so they're they're always kind of like 25% oversubscribed. And now we lay on them the CARES Act, which is 6.9 million, which is good to have, but that creates a whole nother set of requirements. They always, you know, so the people I think we should be thanking are Priscilla, Kimberly Chan, Maria Morales and their new accounting manager, Lane Ho. And they all work really hard and they always do have such a great smiling attitude and the numbers, the way they've done are really well explained. So my hats are off to them.
I would like to echo those same sentiments. And Janet, if you had been on the board when Dennis started, the budget looked quite different. We had all these forms that look like what you submit to the state. And let me tell you, Dennis stepped right up and he made that presentation and the budget and the way it looks and the way we understand it and the 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 charts have come a long way and a lot of it has to do with the relationship between Dennis and he is always there to share his ideas and to question and make it better for all of us. So thank you to everyone in the business office and to Dennis for all these years of helping us improve and be better with the budget.
Yeah, and I I want to also offer my thanks to the budget team and Priscilla and everybody who works on it. And also to Dennis, I know you have put your heart and soul in easily read. And I know it's even gotten better since I've been on the board the last 13 years. You know, the budget team working the CBO and the board has really made it much more readable for all of us, right? It's a it's a story that gets told now that people can understand. And we're very transparent with where all the money is and how it's being spent and all of that. So I really appreciate it. It really does tell a story. And not every school district has that, that's for sure. Some of them are still just giving the community the forms that you send to the state, which are almost unreadable unless you're a finance person. And even then it's a and even then it's unreadable, right? So thank you. I I I am, and I know we're all concerned about the cafeteria deficit. I, I, I am, and I know we're all concerned about the cafeteria deficit, particularly the 1.2 million. It's bigger this year and we know why. But one thought I had, Dr. Baker and team and maybe the cafeteria committee could think about this is, is there any additional outreach that we could do to our families to inform them that any child can get these meals? Because we need more kids in our community to be getting the meals. And I know we've done it kind of somewhat, but I don't know if there's an opportunity for a marketing campaign or something because isn't it, is it going through the end of the school year? And so it would really benefit of it. And, and I, you know, I think anybody, you don't have to be low income. You don't have to be a certain kind of, you know, everybody is eligible. And I would think that many families would enjoy getting the meals if they just knew that it was available to them.
Yeah. So I think on the marketing side, every, we've got, they've done a lot.
Yeah, okay.
Already helped a lot also in marketing. And it's just really, you know, people not getting it. We're, we, they've done deliveries. They're actually delivering it to students' homes. And so we're hoping that in January, when, when some students will go back in person, things would be changed again. We were going to adapt and we will see how we can best provide meals for all the students. Yeah.
Yeah. And then obviously for next year, we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to do something because we can't, I mean, 1.2 million, if we take that out of our general fund every year, that's going to be a lot of money.
Yeah, and I, I must agree that we've done a great job. Well, not me, but the district personnel has done a great job in marketing. I think one of the issues too is that people are afraid to come out. You know, the families are afraid. Some, you know, that could before eat at school, now they're, they're having trouble, the parents work. So this pandemic has really hit us hard in a variety of ways. So I'm hopeful that we will improve once students return back in person, but we will keep an eye on that one.
Thank you.
So Priscilla, one thing that Dennis said that kind of struck a chord with me. I don't, I don't know if you know, but my husband is a director of finance. So he, you know, heads up a business team that is severely understaffed. So I have witnessed how hard that is on him and how much time and energy he has to put into making that, that team work and be successful. And so just from, from my perspective, as, as having been married to somebody in that position, I just want to say thank you. Thank your team. I can appreciate how much, how much goes into this and how hard it is. And it's a sacrifice for your families too. We really need you. We really, really appreciate everything that you've done to, to keep us afloat too.
Thank you. And then really that for my team.
Please do.
So the other thing I would add, you made me think of it, Janet, is at one point we had a CBO where nobody would go to them and they would just go off and do their own thing. And Priscilla came in and she has earned the respect of everybody in the district. So people are coming to her and her staff and asking for advice. And that makes such a difference in terms of how, how good your numbers are and you don't end up with problems. So Priscilla, she's like, like Raul level to give you a sense. And she knows that's a compliment. Look at her.
But I can't see her all anymore. He moved to another state. I would have told him. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
So yeah, the same thing again, Priscilla. I personally know. Which by the way, my boss also says you are a great mentor to her. So I do appreciate the clearness of your reports. Say everything, there's questions. And the only question that I did more, more of a comment too was on Fund 13 as well. I, I know that most schools do suffer on that. And, and I think it's a sad situation, but again, we probably have to just work a little harder to make sure that our families are really informed and know that they could go ahead and fill out the application. And again, that would be beneficial to the district. So again, I do thank you and your team for all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else on this, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria, sorry, I'm thinking my place. Maria and Cecilia, I think is correct. Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Tracy McBride.
Aye.
Tracy Marcos.
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Solcom. President McAvoy.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Priscilla. 15.4, the acceptance of California School Employees Association sunshine proposal.
Thank you. So tonight I bring to you the proposal for a successor contract agreement with CSCA, which would open up the 2021 school year. And so you can see before you the variety of different contract language that CSCA is proposing to negotiate. And we're expecting to start that in January for 2021. Are there any questions?
I see none.
I'll move to accept.
That's Alisa. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Maria. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tracy McBride.
Aye.
Tracy Marcos.
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Solcom.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Thank you. 15.5, the governing board's initial proposal for negotiations with CSCA.
Thank you. So in turn, the district is opening up the following articles for negotiations with CSCA as well for the 2021 school year. Are there any questions regarding the initial proposal?
So I'm not seeing any questions. We have a speaker's card on this item. If we'd like to take that now. Okay, so we can go ahead. That's Maria Stockton. And we have three minutes and I will share my screen with the timer.
Okay, I may have put the wrong number down. I wanted to talk about CSCA's proposal. So is that inappropriate for me to talk? Because right now it's the district's proposal.
I think, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay. This comes at a great time because this is also my last board meeting as chapter president. So I can address this quickly and then I'll just, I guess, be popping in on your board meetings after this. But what I wanted to say is that CSCA was hoping to get an Appalachian shale to roll over our contract and accept the 4%, the same as the teachers way back before the middle, before the new year. Unfortunately, we were told that we, the district or the board members wanted some contract language to change, which forced us to put in a proposal. What you see in the proposal may look lengthy for CSCA, but that's most, most of contract cleanup, updates and some enhancements to some benefits. What, as you just seen, the, the budget being told, especially when it comes to Cal, Pers and Stirs, it looks like Pers is putting in a lot more money, but when you come to a percentage, 1% of a certificated salary is greater than 1% of a classified. So though, I don't even think our percentage is equal, but all we've ever asked from the district is what's fair and equitable. We never thought we asked for anything out of line or anything. So we are going to be going to clean up language and everything and would like the board to really remember, fair and equitable isn't always a percentage. And when we retire, it doesn't matter if you are a teacher, administrator, classified, we should have the same amount of funds to buy our loaf of bread as anybody else. And so we're looking forward to going into negotiations now with the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, so did the board have any comments or questions on this item? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria. Do we have a second? Thanks, Cecilia.
Yes.
Sorry, there's a bit of a lag. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tracy McBride.
Aye.
Tracy Marcos.
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Solcom.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Okay. 15.6, discussion approval of board policy 6158 on independent study.
Yes, thank you. I'm bringing the independent study board policy to you tonight for the discussion and approval. We do have a few changes to the board policy and then a few extra changes regarding the administrative regulations, the ARs. And so some minor changes that we put in this policy is, is acknowledging that it could include TK through third grade versus kinder. And meeting with a teacher, right now our practice is twice, at least twice a month while a student is on independent study. And that's within the board policy. But a notable item in regards to the ARs, which I know the board doesn't approve, but I just wanted to mention tonight, was we added distance learning due to a pandemic or state of emergency as one of the items and why independent study may be considered for a family. And also increasing the duration of time that a student could be on independent study from one semester to the year. We also cleaned up language regarding pronouns, appropriate pronouns within the policy. And I wanted to bring this to you tonight, certainly as a timely fashion as we move into the, the second semester. We are on a trimester schedule, but this board policy is reading semesters because there are families in our district that chose independent study and I don't have the number off the top of my head tonight, so I'd have to research and get back to if you're interested as an option this year for independent study work, which means that they are still working at the pace with the class and they're still getting feedback from their teacher, but they are not participating in live instruction, you know, online or what have you. So it's truly independent study. In the past, we've seen this usually when students possibly have a medical concern or a long vacation or what have you. So this board policy makes those minor changes, but important as we progress through this year in a pandemic as well. Are there any questions regarding the policy?
None.
Yes, so Janet and I have already reviewed all of this with Wendy. So it's really just the rest of you.
And I see they're shaking their heads now.
Well, I'll go ahead and.
Wendy went over with me, so I'm fine with it.
Then is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Alisa.
Second.
Cecilia. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Tracy Marcos.
Aye.
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Solcom.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Okay, moving on to board and superintendent reports. Would anybody like to go first? Alisa, would you like to go?
Sure, I'll go first. So last week I had lots of CSBA activities, had a board meeting, a delegate assembly, and then two days of the annual conference. And I thought the annual conference was really well done with the virtual setting. The general session speakers were excellent. I learned a lot. And then there was a lot of good sessions and it's late and we've had a long day. So I'm not going to go into details, but I do think maybe we could agendize some of this at another meeting or some of it may just come up in our committee work. I know in talking to Janet, both of us attended some equity sessions. So we'll be talking to Linda Montez about that and bringing that to our district. But if there's anything else that people think about, it might be, we could either agendize it or just bring it into our committee work because I know that many of us were at the annual conference. And that's it. I had lots of other meetings, but it's late and I'm just going to stop there.
Anybody else?
I attended the superintendent advisory committee. And then again, we just went over the presentation of what's going on with the COVID testing and stuff. Everybody mentioned about want to open California economy, fix the childcare crisis. So I thought it would be interesting, interested to learn. And so basically Senator Leva, along with other entities and staff are looking and advocating strongly for childcare and for it to be funded. So it was a very interesting meeting and that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Cecilia.
I just attended the budget committee with Dennis and Priscilla and John.
You're on mute, Dennis.
I make more, I make more sense on mute. So we had two, I lost my sheet. We had two bond construction meetings. It was Dr. Baker and Janet. The night after our last board meeting, we had the measure T oversight committee. Patty Knight and Olivia and Priscilla did a great job. I mean, they, when they're done, you just, if you're on that committee, you're just thinking, these guys have it totally going on. I went to the Alante Selby Spanish Immersion School. And that was so cool because it was so unique. You know, you're used to going to MIT or Sequoia and seeing a stage play. And this was students in their house with literally a sheet over their window. And they, they would have one student perform and they'd go to another house and have that person perform the skits. And it was, it was just really cool and it was just, it was really exciting to see that they're doing those extra things. And I know, I was talking to Carrie Dubois and she was saying at CSBA, there's a school district in Glendale that doubled their events for students. And they found that their attendance went from 60% of all to 100 by doing extracurricular things. So, so big props to Alante Selby for that. Alisa and Dr. Baker and I met with attorneys for the workforce housing. So that's moving along. And then we had the county elected call and I gave all the board members and John the minutes from that. And then I'm working on something that I'm not going to get done before I'm off, that I'm not going to stop. And that's, we received an estimate for $90,000 for the election from the county election office. And I'm just incensed because we didn't have an election. And if you think about it, we had three people go to the county, go out paperwork for probably 30 minutes each. And so for an hour and a half work, they're trying to bill us between 70 and $90,000. So I'm, I'm kind of hounding them to say, hey, this, this isn't right. We didn't have an election.
And Dennis, those meetings were virtual and you're right, they were very quick.
Right. But, but I mean, it's like, come on, guys, like, through. We didn't have an election. So I don't know where I'll get on that, but maybe I have more power as not a board member because I can then write letters to the editor, call my buddy Warren Solcom. That's all I had.
Thanks. So I think everything I have has been covered other than the chamber education committee meeting that Dr. Baker and I were at. And then Alisa and Dr. Baker and I did some coffees with the superintendent. The CSBA conference was excellent. I was very impressed with how well they pulled off the virtual conference. I could tell there was a lot of effort put into that. The, the general session speakers were fantastic. Really enjoyed the equity sessions I attended. And that's about it for me. Dr. Baker, do you have anything? He's muted, but he's saying, no, he doesn't. It's late.
All been covered.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on. We have no information items, any correspondence? It's been rather quiet, I think. None? Other business suggested items for future agenda? Alisa, you made a suggestion earlier when you were talking about the CSBA conference, but you're going to be board president next, so you make a note of that.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else? Okay, changes to the board agenda? None? So that brings us to the end of our agenda. It's 10:20. We would like to, if it's okay and it's not too late, in honor of Dennis's final meeting, we'd like to play the, the video that Kathy James put together in full. So I think Kyle can go ahead and do that. Are you here, Kyle?
I'm here, I just was muted, sorry.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and do this.
I think Dennis may be pulling...
Are you watching Lori?
Yeah, he's getting Lori in on this.
Lori, okay.
I want to say thank you for everything you've done to support all the students in the Redwood City School District, the staff, the teachers, and of course, our administrators. Be well, be happy, enjoy the next part of your adventure that you are embarking on. And don't forget us. Feel free to come back, help us out, be on a committee, or just volunteer, but continue to be the awesome person that you are. Take care.
Everything is awesome. Everything is cool when you're part of the team. Everything is awesome when we live in our dreams. Everything is better when we stick together. Side by side, you and I gonna win forever. Let's party forever. We're the same, I'm like you, you're like me, we're all working in our own league. Everything is awesome. Everything is cool when you're part of the team. Everything is awesome when we live in our dreams. Have you heard the news? Everyone's talking life is good, cause everything's awesome. Lost my job, it's a new opportunity. One free time for my awesome career. I feel more awesome than an awesome possum. Wip my body and drop the frosting. Three years later, I shoot the frosting. Smell like a blossom, everything is awesome. Step from mud, got new ground too. Go from the wind and it's off to the loom. Off to the loom. Off to the loom. Everything is better when we stick together. Side by side, you and I gonna win forever. Let's party forever. We're the same, I'm like you, you're like me, we're all working in our own league. Everything is awesome. Everything is cool when you're part of the team. Everything is awesome when we live in our dreams. Blue skies, bouncy springs. We just named you awesome things. A Nobel Prize, a piece of string. You know what's awesome? Everything! Dogs and fleas, allergies. A book of Greek antiquities. Brand new pants, a very old vest. Awesome items are the best. Trees, clogs, they're awesome. Rocks, clocks, and socks, they're awesome. Things, and kings, and twigs, that's awesome. Everything you see, or think, or say, is awesome. Everything is awesome. Everything is cool when you're part of the team. Everything is awesome when we live in our dreams. I wake up in the morning, wide awake for the day. And I say, what a morning, it's all okay. It's all real, and that's why I feel. Everything is awesome. Everything is cool when you're part of the team. Everything is awesome when you're living out a dream. Everything, everything is awesome. Good, ain't it good now? Nice, feeling fine. What a world, what a feeling, and it's mine. It's all okay, and that's why we say. Everything is awesome. Everything is cool when you're part of the team. Everything is awesome when you're living out a dream. Living out a dream. Everything is awesome. 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 Awesome. Everything is 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 awesome.
Dennis, it has been an honor and a privilege of a lifetime to serve with you on the Redwood City School Board. Thank you so much for all you've done for students over the years, for staff, family, and for all of us in the community. As Maya Angelou said, "People will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget the way you made them feel." And Dennis, you always have made each of us feel special. Thanks again for all you've done, enjoy your retirement, and we wish you well.
Hi, Dennis.
Hey, Dennis.
Congratulations, Dennis. Thanks for all you've done for our community and the district.
Congratulations. Thanks for visiting me when I was in recuperation mode.
Thanks for all your support for all the teachers and schools over the years. Thank you, Dennis. We're happy for you.
Congratulations.
Hope your quarantine is going well.
Hey, Dennis. There's something about this that's not quite right. I returned to work in Redwood City and you're leaving. I guess I can think, well, I got here just in time to see you again. Anyway, I want to thank you so much for all of your service to our district, to our kids, your commitment, your big heart. We knew we could always count on you to do the right thing, say the right thing, care about each one of us. I particularly want to thank you for the past expressions of care. When I was sick and when my mom passed away, I'll never forget how you stopped at the board meeting right before it started or right before it ended, and say a few really kind words specifically to me. It meant a lot to me. I'm going to remember you, I'm going to miss you. Let me know if you want me to send you pictures of my cat, because I know my cat has enjoyed entertaining you as well. Anyway, we wish you the best. Redwood City will not be the same without you. Please keep in touch. Thank you. Thank you for everything. Bye.
Dennis, it's Wendy Kelly here. I want to thank you for sharing your mind and heart with the staff, students, families, and community in Redwood City. It's been such a pleasure knowing you over the years and working with you over many, many years. And I started as a teacher in 1999, and it has been amazing to be a part of the process that makes Redwood City great through the board and all of its work. You've always been fair and consistent, kind and ethical, and you're an amazing communicator. I've really appreciated the handwritten notes that have been so sincere and genuine. I will miss our talks and how you've always challenged me to be a better person and better employee, to always think of others in this business of people, and to take risks. I also really appreciate the fact that you've always reminded me and others to take the higher road. You've left a legacy in Redwood City, and we are better off for it. I want to thank you and Lori and your family for all the years that you have put in for the students and the staff and our entire community. They will definitely be remembered, and I always want you to remember, you are definitely a rock star.
Hi, Dennis. Thank you so much for everything that you've done over the years. I really appreciate your support, your dedication, your hard work, and even the little extra touches of the birthday cards. I really appreciate that you come to visit Kennedy every year and go to every classroom with me, and I'm sure that the staff appreciates the donuts. Some of my favorite memories with you are when we sat with you and Lori at the Kent Awards a couple of years ago, and then I really enjoyed sitting with both of you and the others at Facebook last year at the Sequoia Awards. That was really special and really am grateful that you invited me to come. Enjoy your extra time off, and again, thank you for all of your support and hard work over the years.
Hi, Dennis. I just wanted to chime in here with a quick note. I hope you have a great retirement. You've been such a valuable asset to the Redwood City School District. My, my biggest memory is, is that anytime that I would need to prepare anything for the board to look at or a board resolution, I'd have to ask myself just one question, which is, what is Dennis going to ask? And by just doing that, I knew that I would be completely prepared for anything that I would be asked during a board meeting, and I thank you for that. And I hope that you have a great time in retirement with your family, and I appreciate the things that you've done for our district. Thanks.
Dennis, I just want to thank you for your years of dedicated service to this district. I know that I'm not the only one who is going to miss just the truly personal and human touch that you add to this position. You, you have really modeled how to care for people in our district, and I just, I really appreciate that aspect of how you've really just rounded out our board, and I know that we're all going to really miss you. Thank you so much, Dennis.
Hello, Dennis. Hope you're well. Can't believe it's been 17 years. Seems like just yesterday when you first came to the board. I just wanted to say thank you for all you've done for our families, for our students, for our staff. You've always been a champion, you've always been in my corner. Thank you for all your words of advice, for your care, for your dedication, for just how much you've given of yourself. I want to wish you the best on your new adventure. Enjoy your grandchild. Take care of yourself, and I hope to see you soon in person. Thank you, Dennis, for everything. Bye.
And Dennis, this is Catherine. I just wanted to let you know that I've always appreciated working with you over these many years, and it has been a pleasure to collaborate with you, share our ideas about our own children, talk about the progress of our students in Redwood City. I just want to say thank you, Dennis, for all you've done. You'll be missed, and I can't wait to see your next adventures with your grandchildren. Take care.
Dennis, it's Leslie Zanielli, and I want to wish you all the best for this next chapter in your life. Thank you so much for all you've done for the Redwood City School District. I will remember fondly your site visits, our conversations, and those yummy donuts. Thank you so much again. Muchisimas gracias. You will be missed.
Dennis, thank you for all of your support over the years. I really appreciate your caring and your thoughtfulness, and we're really going to miss you up here at Roy Cloud. Don't be a stranger. Take care.
Hi, Dennis. I'm going to miss you. You're a great person with a great heart, and you've done wonderful things for our community. I wish the best for your future, and I hope you keep in touch. You're definitely a legend around here. We're going to miss your donuts. I'm going to miss my walks with you around campus, when you shake every single person's hand and thank them for what they do. Thank you for everything you've done, Dennis. I'll miss you.
Dennis, I'd like to say thank you so much for everything you have done for our school district, for Roosevelt School, for me personally. You've been an amazing mentor. You have huge support for us as staff and also for all of our students for so many years. You're going to be very much missed. I do hope you will continue to reach out to me whenever you notice any of our signs on the fence have fallen down again. And I do hope you're able to at least come by and visit the school again once we're all able to open up properly. I know this is not really the way we would all like to say farewell, but we wish you all the best, and I want to thank you so, so much for everything you have done. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, Dennis. I just wanted to thank you for supporting Christine and me these past few years at Roy Cloud. I sincerely appreciate your kindness, your support, and your genuine interest in our community. I know at parent coffees and school visits, you always took the time to let people know how much you cared. Every year, you sent me a birthday card. I was really impressed with that. I was most impressed when, gosh, it seems so long ago now, when you came to visit Roy Cloud, I believe it was for staff appreciation. And yes, you brought us something sweet, some treats or something, but you didn't just leave them in the staff room and then exit the campus. You actually walked the entire campus with me. We went into every classroom, we went through the front office, the MUB, playground, cafeteria. You greeted each and every person on our staff, every employee, looked them in the eye, and thanked, thanked them with all sincerity for the role that each one of us played in supporting our kids at Roy Cloud. And that really speaks volumes about who you are, and I know it goes a long way with me and the rest of our staff. I will truly miss you and your service to our community, and I just want to let you know how much I appreciated getting to know you these past few years. Thanks so much. Good luck in your future endeavors.
Good evening, Dennis. Warren Cedar here, giving you a big shout out and raise the roof for your countless hours and years of dedication supporting the Redwood City School District, both as a trustee and as a parent. Yes, I knew you first, as a parent at Kennedy Middle School with your wife Lori, working the school site council, resurrecting our instrumental music program there. And it's been a pleasure seeing your focus and dedication throughout the years. I loved our visits at the school site where we could reflect on what was going on, and your genuine interest, listening to what's happening, and thanking every single staff member here at the school for their service. Thank you for your service. I want to read this poem, phrase that's very meaningful for both of us. "A hundred years from now, it will not matter how much money you had, the sort of house you lived in, or the kind of car you drove, but the world may be different because you were important in the life of a child." Dennis, you are important in the lives of many children, families, teachers, staff, principals, superintendents. You have made our Redwood City community a better place. Thank you so much, and I still look forward to seeing you coming to visit at the school sites. Don't be a stranger. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis, for everything that you've done for Redwood City, for our students, for our families, for our communities. You've been a wonderful board member, and personally, I'm incredibly grateful for every conversation we've had. You have a really talented way of making each of us feel special and like the rock stars that we all are, and I admire you so much. I really appreciate everything that you've done, and thank you for being awesome, and I know you'll continue to be awesome and a wonderful grandfather. So I hope that's an enjoyable time for you.
Hi, Dennis. This is Patricia Pino, thanking you and appreciating every single thing you have done for me as a Redwood City School District employee, as a site administrator, as a district director, special ed. And I want to thank you for all of your guidance and all of your positive attitude, always so inspirational and supportive to the children in our district. Thank you so much for all we have done.
Dennis McBride, synonym of leadership, encouragement, dedication, inspiration, kindness, commitment to the Redwood City School District and community. Thank you for everything that you have done. Personally, I want to thank you for your support during my career here in Redwood City. Moving forward, I wish you all the best. You are a beautiful person and an amazing human being.
Thank you, Kathy, for putting that together. So...
Wow.
Wow. If I ever had a bad day, I'm firing that bad boy up.
Yeah.
Wow, that, that, I'm speechless. That is amazing.
That's a great way to end this meeting, I think.
Yep.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to adjourn in Dennis McBride's awesome 17-year career with the Redwood City School District. Thank you Dennis.
And I would love to second that.
Give a huge applause for Dennis McBride and his service.
Lori's in the other room sitting in a recliner watching a 60-inch TV going woo-hoo.
It's, it's, it's better than a Giants game. It's like the World Series, Dennis.
You guys are way too kind.
All right. Thank you Dennis. Thank you everyone.
Thank you Dennis. We'll be, we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I will see you Priscilla.
Yeah, see you.
I will be the finance ghost. All right, well, thank you everybody. You made this really special.
All right.